I'm the Chair Christine Vitale. I'm joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxinelli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. And I want to officially welcome Ms. Kelly to our regular meeting. She has joined us for a couple of meetings already, but she is replacing Ms. Pico. Welcome, Ms. Kelly. We're very excited to have you on the Board and look forward to working with you. With that, I ask you to please rise to the pledge. Ms. Guernsey, will you lead us in the pledge? Moving on to our student reports. We have our representatives from Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School. Why don't we start with Fairfield Ludlow? Just introduce yourself and you can give your report.
I just want to test if this is on. Okay, testing. Is it good? I can't. Okay. Is this on? Can everyone hear? All right, hold on. Okay, all right, that's better. Good evening. My name is Reed Childers. I am the Senior Board of Ed Representative from Fairfield Ludlow High School. So, the first thing I'd like to address is the Will to Live Assembly that took place a few weeks ago. I know it also happened at Ward. At the last meeting, we briefly discussed the upcoming mental health assemblies, and this was one of them. It was presented by John Tratwine, and the assembly touched on the idea that depression is essentially a maskable illness. And Tratwine stressed the importance of delivering hope, love, and support to your peers. He gave a personal tribute to his son, Will, who took his own life in 2010, and explained how Will's death caused him to devote his life to improving relationships among students and promoting difficult discussions in order to essentially increase students' will to live. The next topic is about the cohort for special education students at Ludlow called the Complex Learners Cohort, or CLC for short. So, recently, these students have been pursuing jobs within The Perch, which is our school store. So, some of the tasks they have participated in are taking inventory, helping to set up the space for the store, and more. We are all very excited for the opening of The Perch, to see these students' hard work, and to purchase new spirit wear as well. So, another important event that happened recently took place last Wednesday, the 24th of November, as we welcomed our alumni back to Ludlow. These students were permitted to come to school at 10:00 a.m. and visit their teachers, counselors, deans, and more. Some even lectured students on the class they were in and the success that the class gave them. These graduates brightened up the school, providing encouragement, propelling success, and reminding students of the amazing alumni network that Ludlow offers. Lastly, as me being the varsity football manager, it is only fitting that I share the results of the Ludlow versus Ward Thanksgiving game. With a final score of 50 to 21, Ludlow won the game. Sorry, Ward. These athletes fought incredibly hard, and while on the sidelines, I saw incredible energy and encouragement among the teammates. Senior Luca Inoney, playing quarterback, won Best Overall Player of the Game with Manny Kachari, Aaron Field, and Caleb McNeil winning Best Player in other areas. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Kent Martins. I'm a junior from Ludlow. Just want to congratulate the Ludlow varsity football team for their win again. And regarding the rest of the Ludlow Fall Sports Season, our girls soccer team made it to the state semifinals, and our girls volleyball team made it to the state finals. Ludlow seniors Nate Kramer and Jordan Stein were awarded as FCAC Scholar Athletes for their academic and athletic accomplishments. And Ludlow senior Sophia LaFallas made the second state All-States Field Hockey as well. And in terms of other individual students, Ludlow seniors Lauren G. and Grace Camara were noted in the press. Lauren G.'s podcast called Stem Powering Conversation, where she interviews figures in STEM careers about their experiences, was covered in the Connecticut Post and Daily Advent. And Grace Camara made the All-National Choir, which is an audition-based group, only eligible for those who are already in all states. So, a big congrats to them. Ludlow's Drama Club put on four amazing performances of Lord of the Flies led by the club director, Ms. Newsen, with surprise appearances from Mr. Hatsis and our choir director, Ms. Pine. And Ludlow's Key Club ran a very successful Thanksgiving food drive and collected more than 20,000 ounces of food. It took two full cars and a pickup truck to deliver the food to Bridgeport Rescue Mission. With that, I'd like to pass the mic somehow to the representatives from Ward.
Maybe just switch seats?
Good evening. My name's Emma Fekety. I'm a senior at Fairfield Ward High School. And on behalf of Lynn, myself, and all of the Ward students, we hope that everyone had a nice Thanksgiving as well as a relaxing weekend. I would first like to highlight our fall play, A Servant with Two Masters, that was performed on November 19th, 20th, and 21st. The students involved in the play put on an amazing performance for a large audience in our auditorium and truly impressed all of us with their exceptional theater abilities.
Greetings, everyone. It's great to be back again. This week, the Fairfield Ward High School Unity Coalition will begin its Names Can Really Hurt Assembly as part of the No Place for Hate Initiative, starting today with the 11th graders and soon followed by the 10th graders on Thursday, then followed by the freshmen and seniors. This assembly is meant to educate our school community into making it a place of no hate and comfort for all.
On November 24th, we had our Alumni Return Day, where several former students from the classes of 2019 and 2020 returned and shared in the auditorium for current juniors and seniors during three set times during the day. We were able to listen and ask questions about life after Ward as well as listen to advice from the alumni. I think I could speak for the entire student body that all of us were beyond thrilled to see some of the former Mustangs and reunite with us.
And also this month, students came out to participate at the first pep rally in two years, where all students came outside to the Ward football field and cheered out for our Fall Sports Student Athletes. I can tell confidently that our pep rally was a great success. And with all our students wearing red, black, and white, it was great to be back in business.
We had mentioned last month that the Will to Live Foundation was coming to present to our school on suicide prevention. Mr. Tratwine shared an outstanding presentation to the student body, and the entire school was decked out in the color white to show support for the cause. Additionally, to share some more good news, our Spread Smiles Fairfield sweatshirts sold by the Ward Entrepreneurship Class will be donating about $20,000 to the Will to Live Foundation. Ward is extremely proud of their success and excited to show support towards a good cause.
In addition, a Fairfield Ward High School student and his peers went out to build one of the nation's first ever permanent COVID-19 memorial as an Eagle Scout project at Jennings Park off Post Road. This memorial was officially unveiled by the First Select Women last month in memory of all the souls who lost their battle to COVID-19. The memorial is built to support the community members who are struggling through the loss of their loved ones.
Finally, eight of our student athletes signed during the National Letter of Intent Signing Day on November 10th, and Ward is extremely proud of their success as they will continue to excel in both academics and athletics in their future.
And we anticipate for another great month of activities at Ward, and looking forward to sharing with you in a few weeks. Thank you for your time, and go Ward.
Thank you very much for your reports. Take it to the Board. Any questions? Ms. Rotelli?
I just want to congratulate the Spread Smiles. If anyone's wondering, this is the sweatshirt that raised $20,000 for the Will to Live Foundation. So, congratulations. And I want to thank Mr. Kavanoff for extending the invitation to the Board members to the Will to Live presentation. It was very moving, and it's an important reminder for our students what's really important as they try to navigate their way through school. I know that SEPTA, a few years ago, put on a similar presentation we brought through to all three middle schools. And our goal was to try to repeat that every three years so that it would touch every single student who went through the school system. But we just couldn't manage it money-wise. We could never raise enough money to do it. But I think it would be really great if Fairfield could find a way to bring this presentation to reach all of our students, starting in middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Any other questions for our students? Mr. Peterson?
I just want to say that I was proud to see the Ward play, Servant of Two Masters. My child was in it. And it was just, it was great stupid fun. It was, you know, an 18th-century episode of Three's Company, Misadventures of a Bunch of People from Turin. And I hope you got the taste of shaving cream out of your mouth. But it was great. It was great to see the kids back up on stage, back doing normal sort of things. It was very heartwarming.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more questions. Thank you for your reports. Always nice to have you here. You are welcome to stay. You are also welcome to get on with your evening someplace else. Leave it up to you. So, moving on to public comment. By members of the public who would like to give comment on agenda items, to come forward. Just ask that you state your name and address for the record. And a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit. So, once you reach that three minutes, I'm going to have to cut you off. Your name and your address.
My name's Andrew McInnis, and I'm at 301 Sasko Hill Road. Good evening, Board members. Like I said, my name is Andrew, and I am a senior at Ludlow. I'm also one of the student leads of Youth for Equity at FLHS and a member of the Fairfield Equity Coalition. It is so nice to be here today in front of you. I wanted to discuss the African-American, Black, Latino, and Puerto Rican Studies course proposal that is on the agenda. The course was presented to you back in October, and you all had some concerns. I understand your concerns. With anything new we try, there are questions to be asked, things that the committee might not have thought about. What you hear from the committee tonight might not be perfect, and there could still be some concerns. But I know that as the course is taught next year, teachers will see how it can be improved upon for future years. This course is needed here in Fairfield and across the state. It will bring a new perspective to the classroom that most students haven't heard, and it will allow BIPOC students to feel represented. BIPOC students will feel represented in the curriculum because it not only focuses around them, but was developed by BIPOC students and other stakeholders. I also believe that this class should count towards the U.S. History requirement. I took U.S. History last year as a junior, and as you will see tonight, many events and topics we discussed are covered in the proposed course. Things like the Three-Fifths Compromise, the Missouri Compromise, the Manifest Destiny, the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, just to name a few. Although I can't take this class because I will be graduating, I am excited that it will be offered to our students in the next school year and beyond. This is the first step in diversifying our curriculum and preparing students for a different perspective and life outside of Fairfield. Please do not let perfect be the enemy of the good. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the public, I allowed the applause for our student reports, but we don't usually allow applause for public comments. So, I just ask you not to do it again respectfully. Any other members of the public like to come forward? You have to hold the button on the...
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name is Leila Henry, and my address is 155 Fairmount Terrace. I'm here tonight to talk about the new Black and Puerto Rican Studies course. I am the co-president of the Beloved Community Club, which is the middle school equity group. We meet once a week to discuss issues around racial equity in our town and around the country. We heard that the state of Connecticut had mandated this course for all high schools, and that made us really happy. We watched the Board of Ed meeting the first time that this course was being presented, and we became discouraged. When Board members said that they would only approve it as an elective, it felt like a kick in the gut. It was more people validating that we are not valued. I would like to explain to you what this did to me. I am mixed race. My father is Black and my mother is white. Looking at the Board, I'm not sure that many of you can understand what it is like to be a person of color in a town like Fairfield. I would like to explain my experience to help you better understand what it is like and why it is so important that you vote for this new course to become accepted as the U.S. History requirement for students. Every discussion I enter into and every class I enter into, I have to wonder if this person values me, if this person believes that Black Lives Matter. I'm always nervous what a classmate might say or what a teacher might say to make me feel otherwise. When I heard that there were teachers who were asking for this course to be the U.S. History requirement, I thought to myself, it's about time. This country was built by my Black ancestors and the contributions of Black and Hispanic people, along with Indigenous people, throughout history. This is what has made this a great nation. Having a class that teaches all of us U.S. History but through the lens of Black and Brown people would give students like me a place to feel proud and comfortable. It would be a class where we didn't have to worry about the narrative or the accuracy in our history. It would be a place where I could feel safe while learning the history of this country. So, while you're discussing and voting on this course, please don't think about what other districts are doing or what fits into a schedule. Think about empowering every single Black and Brown child in this district. Think about offering white children the opportunity to see things through a different lens. Think about me and my right as a student to feel safe and secure without the worries of trauma that can come along with feeling less than. Think about offering many Black, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies students hoping for this class to show what their ancestors went through and their lens on life to show to white students. And lastly, think about teaching the real truth and how this country's nation...
That's time. Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to give comment at this time?
Can you hear me? Okay.
You can.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Elwood. I live at 46 Bibbins in Fairfield. I am nervous like last time, so I'm going to read my statement. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Black, African-American, Latino, and Puerto Rican Studies course being presented to the Board for the 2022-23 school year. So much is already said so beautifully tonight about the importance of this course in our community. But before I share my own statement, I'd like to take a minute to share words from a current Fairfield Public Schools educator, Kevin Staton. He's the Library Media Specialist at Ward High School, who couldn't be here tonight. These are his words. The Fairfield Board of Ed has an opportunity today to set a tone and be a model for the entire state of Connecticut based on its decision today. The AALS, African-American Latinx Studies course, is a history course that will allow students to see the history of this nation through varying perspectives, which is what quality historical scholarship should do. Providing juniors with the opportunity to take this course after completing their requirements in civics and global studies is the logical and prudent thing to do as this is a legitimate history course that parallels U.S. History and has many of the same components. To treat this course as an elective not only denies legitimacy of the course academically as being part of U.S. History, but it will cause FPS to miss out on a tremendous opportunity to offer multiple history courses in the future from the perspectives of women, Asian-Americans, and Indigenous people, just like they do at Harvard, Yale, Columbia, or any elite academic institution. By making this course an actual history course, offering NFPS, we will truly be making it a course for everyone. This is a legitimate history course and should be categorized in the same manner as global studies, civics, and U.S. History. It's a chance for us to tell the state that not only are we implementing this course, but we're breaking ground in a way that other districts fall short by relegating it to just an elective. So, for my own contribution, these are my words. What speaks to me so deeply about this course as U.S. History is the opportunity that it provides all of our students to move beyond a single story of our nation's history. Nigerian novelist Chimamanda Adichie speaks to the danger of a single story and the power of moving beyond it so perfectly in her TED Talk. Here are some of her words. "It is impossible to talk about the single story without talking about power. There is a word, an Igbo word, that I think about whenever I think about the power structures of the world, and it is Nkali. It's a noun that loosely translates to be greater than another. Like our economic and political worlds, stories are too defined by the principle of Nkali. How they are told, who tells them, when they're told, how many stories are told, are really dependent on power. Power is the ability not just to tell the story of another person..."
Sorry, that's time. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to come forward? Yes, Ms. Asa?
To the woman who was just speaking, it sounded like you had that written down. If you'd like to email that to BOE members, I think we would all appreciate seeing it through in that lens. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. And same for any other commenters who I had to cut off. If you have it written down, if you'd like to forward to the Board, we'd welcome your comment in its entirety. Anybody else like to come forward? You just have to hit the button on the bottom of the mic when you speak.
Hello? Oh, thank you. This is a totally separate topic. My name is Randy Cohen. I am at 200 Lloyd Drive in Fairfield. And my child, Julia Wise, is in the Math Academy's fourth-grade class this year. And I just heard a few hours ago that there was going to be a debate tonight as far as the future of the Math Academy in Fairfield. And I was moved to come to be here tonight to speak on that. Julia, she's nine. She's very shy. She's always struggled with her self-expression and with her confidence, and she's struggled to connect to the other kids in her class. Her mind craves stimulation. She is highly sensitive, and she is concerned about injustice. She is super honest, super conscientious, extremely hard on herself. This is a profile that is typical of a gifted child. And before Math Academy, Julia would leave school drained and tired. She developed a close relationship with her teacher, but she struggled to connect with other students or participate in group work. Her social skills were not enough to bridge the difference in outlook between her and the other children. And it has been transformative for Julia, for the first time in her life, to have a pace of learning so much closer to her natural pace and to have children in her class to whom she can naturally relate. And what makes Math Academy so special is that it is the only accommodation that gifted elementary-school-age children in Fairfield have, which provides instruction appropriate for them during their regular classroom experience. The proposed replacement would not provide either a supportive peer experience or a learning pace adjusted to the needs of these children who are qualitatively different in how they approach material as compared to a usual learner. On behalf of Julia, whose life has been transformed by this program, as well as other learners like her, I ask the Board to reconsider getting rid of this classroom, which has become such a haven and such a place of growth for her. And I'd like, had the privilege of going to this classroom, and it was just such a beautiful thing to see the joy and how readily they connected with each other and how curious and wonderful a place this classroom was. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, we have a few callers on the line. Can we go to the phone line? Have our first caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Laura Horn, and I live on Stroll Rock Common. My son is a fifth-grade student at the Math Academy, and I'm calling today to ask that you vote against the proposal to eliminate the Math Academy or at least delay that vote until you have more data available. When our children were invited to participate in the program, we were informed that the district determined that their needs were not being met in their home schools and that this program could address those needs by accelerating their curriculum and introducing mathematical concepts across subjects. Our experience with the program has been exceptional. When the Math Academy was almost removed from the budget last year, many parents and students spoke up and supported the program. With adequate preparation, I think we'd have had many more tonight as well, and we may still. I just heard one before me. But many of us just found out about this proposal just yesterday or even today. Following discussion last year, the program was maintained for this current year, but the goal was to determine how the faster-paced curriculum and inclusion of math across subjects could be replicated at the homeschool in order to meet the needs of all qualifying students. The proposal to provide 45-minute challenge class to all students once every six days completely fails to meet their needs. My fourth grader is at Burr, and she's currently participating in the Math Olympiad section, which I think is meant to replicate the program for next year. While she enjoys it, I can unequivocally say that her experience and enrichment pales in comparison to what is provided in the immersive experience of the Math Academy. Another important role the Math Academy fills in town is to create a more equitable playing field for students who may ultimately qualify for pre-algebra VII. Currently, students who have the knowledge and means to prepare for the placement test are at an unfair advantage. In providing sixth-grade curriculum in the Math Academy, all participating students will have been exposed to materials in advance of the placement test. The new proposal will not provide adequate exam preparation because the learning will not be compressed over the three years, and thereby, we will revert to the inequitable system which favors students with families who can support external learning of the material. It is a false dichotomy to suggest that only one model can be implemented. The new model is a great enhancement for the homeschools and will enable any interested student at the homeschool the chance to approach problems with creative solutions and to look at math from different angles. However, it will fail to meet the needs of the most highly qualified students who require additional challenge, which is currently being provided in the Math Academy. With respect to the comparison in the memo that suggests that while Math Academy students are like-minded peers, while the new model will provide a diversity of thought, please keep in mind that the two are not mutually exclusive. I assure you, there is diversity of thinking within the Math Academy students. I've heard many interesting debates during my carpools and have been told by teachers of the program that the discussions in class are truly fascinating. There is much more I would love to say. However, I'm going to conclude by reiterating that the district identified these students as having exceptional needs, and the new model as proposed will not address those needs. Before you vote, I urge you to consider visiting these classrooms, speaking with the students, and speaking with the teachers. According to my son and his friends, that has not happened to date. It need not be a dichotomous choice to provide enriched math for all students at the homeschool versus providing Math Academy to those who truly need it. Indeed, the Math Academy should actually be expanded and transportation provided.
I'm sorry, that's time. I don't mean to cut you off, but you've reached your three-minute time limit. Moving on to the next caller. Melissa, are you on the line?
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can. Just please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for your comment.
Okay. My name is Melissa Baker. I live at 127 Zose Drive. My daughter Talia Baker is in the fourth-grade Math Academy class, and she wanted to share some thoughts about the class.
I strongly believe we should keep Math Academy. When I am in class, I feel more comfortable than other years because I am not called names for knowing all the answers. Also, we get to learn from our friends and not just be the teachers. Last year, I had a math packet to do when I was done with my other math. It didn't teach me anything, it just kept me busy. In Math Academy, we also get to explain more strategy to our friends because we don't have to spend as much time have to spend as much time explaining the most basic strategies to the other kids. We dig deeper into the concepts of math to learn the foundation of the math and not just how to apply a formula. We are able to move faster through our units so that by the time we are done with fifth grade, we will have learned all of sixth grade math. If we then get into seventh grade math, we will not be missing a full year of math. I strongly urge you to keep Math Academy so kids like me can learn in an environment where we can be challenged and make mistakes. I feel this is the best way to learn. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. We can move on to our third caller. Grace, are you on the line? Gracelyn?
Yes.
Why we should keep Math Academy. My name is Gracelyn. As a student of Math, of the Math Academy, it is one of the best things that's ever happened to me in my year, in my elementary school years. I love Math Academy. I talk to my classmates and they all love Math Academy too. I want to give you some reasons why you should not stop Math Academy. Math Academy helps stimulate your brain. If the math is not challenging, or the students already know the formula, or feel like it's too easy, they lose interest. All the kids in Math Academy say the same thing. I would always finish my math worksheet in one minute in previous classes, or they say I got an extra math packet, but it was still too easy for me. And they could possibly lose focus in class because the curriculum is too easy for them. Which happened to me before, and my teacher got mad at me. In Math Academy, the accelerated math is challenging enough to keep you interested and focused. Great minds think alike. In Math Academy, the students are similar and have an experience of feeling excluded. In other classes, the teacher will not call on you because you would always know the answers to the questions. In Math Academy, we really understand each other and discuss the answers together, and we also are not afraid to get the wrong answers. We don't get called names like nerd or bookworm, no matter how much we love math, science, or reading. So there is no bullying in Math Academy. We support each other. The teachers are excellent and they make us feel like we belong in Math Academy. There has never been a bad day in fourth grade. Please do not close Math Academy for future students. This experience will benefit them forever. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Gracelyn. Is our fourth caller on the line?
She is, I think she's just trying to figure out her mic.
Marco, if Keshi can hear, do you want to just give her some instructions? Is there a star or something, or is she automatically unmuted?
She's unmuted now. Ms. Messina, I think you might have clicked the mute button on your phone.
We seem to be having, our caller seems to be having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to ask the board if we just, for a moment of personal privilege, just to read a letter that was shared with me to share with the board. I will read this to you and then we'll go back and see if our caller is on. I was forwarded a letter from Donna Twist, the Vice President Development, from the Bridgeport Hospital Foundation, the Executive Director of Norma Frame Breast Center and Integrative Medicine, and the Smilow Cancer Hospital for Bridgeport, Fairfield, Trumbull, Yale New Haven Health. Dear Fairfield Board of Education, our sincere thanks to the students, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators of the Fairfield Public Schools for your participation in the 2021 Pink Pledge. We are so grateful for your generous efforts to raise funds for our patients and programs. Seven years ago, when we partnered with the Fairfield Schools for the first Pink Pledge, we had no idea what this seed would grow into, and it has grown beyond anything we could have imagined, with kids of all ages taking part even during these difficult times. You and your students have shown us what a little creativity and a lot of compassion can do. If schools are the heart of a community, then Fairfield has a heart of gold. Please know how grateful we are for your support, especially during these challenging times. Our physicians, staff, and especially our patients, thank you for your generosity. And through the fundraising efforts of our students, over $12,000 was raised for Pink Pledge. And our caller is on. Ms. Messina, you go ahead, just give your name and address for the record. Can you hear us? All right. I'm going to give you one last second to get your tech ready. On our website, we have some pictures from Pink Pledge. Ms. Brown, can you just run our 30 seconds just to share with the board just some of the great fundraising efforts of our students? I think you pressed the mute button. Yep, Ms. Messina, go ahead. Can you, are you unmuted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can.
Dear Board, Dear Board of Education, I strongly disagree that Math Academy should be shut down. I'm one of the students in the fourth grade Math Academy, and this program has taught me to be a better thinker. It also helps me to be myself inside class because I'm more confident and I feel like I belong. No one calls me a nerd anymore. It also helps build stronger friendships because you are in the same class next year. Math Academy isn't about just one type of accelerated math. We already have covered fractions, decimals, time, and multiplication. We also have challenges of the day. Everyone is good at something different, so we work together to get the answer. Sometimes I regret feeling sad and nervous in not joining Math Academy. I went from grading my classmates' tests last year to being pushed to think differently. It also has accelerated homework that we get every night. I know this doesn't affect me, but I want the kids next year and the years after that to have the same experience because, as me, because I love Math Academy. Sincerely, Michaela Messina.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I think that takes care of all of our commenters on the phone. Thank you for that moment of privilege, and we will move on. Oh, sorry. You snuck up. Name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Madeline DiPiano. I live on 58 Shag Bark Lane, and I'm talking about the course on Black and Latinx. Yeah. This course is important to count as a U.S. history credit so that students won't miss the opportunity to learn the full history of our world and country. I'm currently taking AP American Studies, and Black and Latinx stories are taught as a footnote separate from the history of our country. This is dangerous lesson to teach students at Fairfield Public Schools. Not making it a U.S. history credit portrays this lens of our history as less important and will undervalue the importance of this course and the stories that have continuously not been told in our schools and in our history classes all over the country. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no one else, we will move on. Just a reminder to the public, we also take public comment before voting items and at the end of our meeting. I'm just going to ask the board for your unanimous consent just to suspend the rules and switch the readings of our presentation to start with the accounting and business of travel first. Any objections to just switching them? Okay, seeing none. So we're going to start with the first reading of business course proposals, accounting two, and business of travel. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any opening remarks to this?
Just very briefly. Red page. Our business department faculty continue to explore many means of meeting the needs of our community and our students, and responding to the curricular and economic changes that we are seeing both in the region and in the state and the country. So I want to thank Mr. Williger for being here this evening to present the two proposals, excuse me, the two course proposals that she's bringing forward.
Good evening, James Zavajantik, Executive Director of Instruction, Curriculum, and Assessment. Tonight, the business department, led by Ms. Dr. Williger, in joint collaboration with the high school administration, bring forward two course proposals for your consideration and future adoption to the high school program of studies for students to enroll in during the 2022-2023 school year if approved in the future. First up is a currently approved course for Fairfield Public School students, Accounting Two. Although already approved, the business department recently reviewed its scope and sequence, content, and skills, and is recommending a number of changes. These changes and adaptations, along with its technology, will no longer require a one-year course duration. The content and skills can be instructed in a half-year's time span. Secondly, a growing industry is travel and tourism. The department's second proposal is to incorporate the business of travel and tourism as a new business elective that is paired under the workplace career cluster. At this time, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Ms. Robin Dr. Williger, who will introduce her co-presenter and present to you both courses with follow-up question and answer period. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robin Dr. Williger, and this is my teaching partner, Megan Finn, and we're going to present to you the revisions to the Accounting Two course. As a result of taking this course, students will reflect on the importance of being able to use accounting information to make financial decisions, focus on the ability to read, interpret, and analyze financial information, apply generally accepted accounting principles, explain how the accounting system provides business information, describes the various users of accounting information, and explain the dynamic nature of the business environment in which accounting information is used. This half-year course will build upon the accounting terminology and functions introduced in the beginning Accounting Course, Accounting 30. This emphasis in this course is on accounting for business, specifically partnership and corporate formations. This course will closely examine planning accounting system for specific business needs, as well as closely examine accounting for departmentalized business, payroll, taxes, and inventory. This course will also use a program like QuickBooks to introduce students to the accounting software. This real-world course will be broken into four units of study. Unit One, Accounting Cycle Review: Purchases and Cash Payments. Unit Two, Payroll and Financial Statements. Unit Three, Accounting for Adjustments and Inventory Valuations. And Unit Four, Accounting for Uncollectables and Plant Assets. We are proposing the reduction of credits for the Accounting Two course from a full year 1.0 to a half-year 0.5 credits. In the past year, we have advances to technology, updates to graduation credits, changes in school schedule, which allows more contact time in the classroom, and revisions of the Accounting One curriculum, which allows our team to be more effective and efficient when teaching. We are not asking for new taxing materials, we are only asking to reduce the amount of credits allowed for the course. Although we would always welcome more FTE, we do not feel this will be a deciding factor in this decision.
Any questions and comments on Accounting Two? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Curransey.
Yeah, hi, thank you for sharing this information. How many students currently take Accounting Two?
We started the year with 17 students. This is the first time it would be running. And due to schedule conflict, we unfortunately had to leave, so there's currently 15.
Okay, and that's, I'm sorry, that's at one, that's at one school?
Just one school, at Ward.
Okay, so Ludlow does not have this?
No.
Okay. Okay, and so, so this year it is a full-year course?
Correct.
Okay, so the goal is to have it be a half-year course for next year?
Correct.
Okay. And I just, one quick question. You mentioned, you said that you were going to introduce students to something like QuickBooks, but then in the presentation it says QuickBooks.
Yes, I kind of put in like. So, so there are a variety of software that we could use for it. QuickBooks is running a program that makes it free for students and teachers to use. And the textbook that we are currently using also has assignments that use QuickBooks. There are a variety of other things that you could use as well. Those would be free, except for, there was a few like Peachtree or whatnot, but upon looking at that, we don't feel that that's necessary. So QuickBooks is what, I'm the instructor of Accounting One and Accounting Two, and that's what I feel would be best, and it's free, so that's always a bonus.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Curransey?
My question was also about QuickBooks, so thank you for answering it.
Ms. Mascanelli?
How many students are currently enrolled in Accounting One? Or how many sections, how about that?
We currently have, the reason I'm hesitating is because there's another teacher that teaches Accounting One at Ward as well. So we currently have three sections at Ward and one section running at Ludlow of Accounting One.
So you do see that as being obviously a logical feeder, and that this course, that this might make this course also more appealing for them?
Yes.
Now, this is actually a question to the chair. We had art go from a one year, full year, to a one semester course, and we did not have to vote on that. So I just put that out to you to maybe check on the necessity. Again, I don't know if there's a significant curriculum change that's different, but just in hearing this talk, that just occurred to me, remembering that art course. But not for an answer right now. And I forgot my other question. Sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to add to Accounting Two, the last course was written and approved in 2001, so there were some updates, that's why we did bring it forward. And we can go through the changes of it, but there were some substantial updates, including the timeframe.
Right, but if we're approving an existing course with changes, then we would need to see the curriculum document. These would be the documents that we see when it's a new course.
Do you want to go over the curriculum changes? Or?
Was, I'm not sure if the curriculum document was given. I know it was in the packet, the new curriculum document for the board.
No, I'm talking about the big kahuna. The one with all of the business, the course strands, the course units, the document we, again, I'm not looking to get in this now because I should have said this ahead of time because it didn't occur to me, but this is a new course proposal document, this is not the curriculum document of an existing course.
That is accurate, it is a new course curriculum proposal.
We will forward more information offline.
I should say, I love the idea of it, so please don't in any way take this as an objection to the direction you're moving in, I think it sounds like a great idea, especially making it more accessible to more students. I'm thoroughly, completely in favor. This is really just more of a process issue.
If I could jump in for one second, I think the reason that we were sort of whispering over here, when I joined Ward back in 2000, and I don't even remember, 2002, this document was already there. So this document looks nothing like any recent curriculum documents. So this document is from earlier than 2002, we're not exactly sure when. It does exist, but it really looks like just a typewriter and almost like a paper. And this is many, many, many curriculum cycles ago. So the current document that we have is based off of that, but what has happened is the Accounting One curriculum has changed during that time, and a lot of the topics that were listed as part of the Accounting Two course, or the Advanced Accounting Course, have actually since been moved to Accounting One. So it's not as if there's a lot of changes at all, it's more of a migration. When we moved to different addition for Accounting One, a lot of those topics moved into that course with us. And the Accounting Two also had time built in for introducing a keyboard to the students and a and a monitor, different types of, you know, calculators. So it was a very outdated document. All the material lines up, it's just the Accounting I has changed since then, and the Accounting II we do have, but it's very, very old. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Business continues to be listed as one of the top five majors and also one of the useful majors in college. On behalf of the business team, I would like to present to you with our newest course in our flight to success, the Business of Travel and Tourism. The Business of Travel-Tourism course provides students with the academic and technical preparation needed to pursue high-skilled, high-demand careers related to the management, marketing, and operations involved with travel and tourism. Students will learn concepts related to specific industry segments, including industry awareness and competitiveness, organizational management, customer service, and sales and marketing. Students will study the skills and characteristics needed for success in the travel and tourism in any service industry. Keeping in alignment with the Fairfield's vision of a graduate, this course will allow students to continue to focus on concepts to ensure that they are acquiring the knowledge and skills needed to be a lifelong learner, responsible citizen, and successful participant in our ever-changing global society. Where's my map? Okay. Why this course, there was supposed to be a map, we'll find it though. Why is this course needed? Referring to the state of Connecticut strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act State Plan, also known as Perkins Five. The Connecticut Partners in Career Map shows the top in-demand career clusters or pathways in Fairfield County. The new business of travel and tourism can align to the following clusters: business management and administration, hospitality and tourism, and marketing. This has been a high demand in this area for many years, and it continues to be a topic of discussion in the Perkins Grant and CTE meetings. The addition of a new course will allow, will provide students with options. Adding this elective will allow an increase for student choice and ownership in their career and career pathway. How will this be beneficial to our students? The newer high school schedule and the new graduation requirements can create a demand for more electives. Business classes have consistently been in high demand and usually meet student maximum. Students will now have another opportunity to take a business elective. A half-year 0.5 credit course with no prerequisites will make this course easy to schedule. This course is also connected to the CTE career cluster, which the Perkins Grant will provide funding for resources. Students are asking for another business elective so they can continue their career and college pathway. Did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. Our units of study. This dynamic and hands-on course will be broken into four units. Unit one, the Business of Travel and Tourism. Unit two, Travel and Tourism Markets. Unit three, Marketing, Travel and Tourism. And unit four, Exploring Careers and Travel and Tourism. Resource allocation. With a proposed reduction of credits to the Accounting II course, this course will allow students to add an additional 0.5 credits. Once again, although we would always welcome more FTE in the Business Department, we do not feel this will be a deciding factor. This course will require minimal funding, and according to the Carl D. Perkins Grant, this course falls under the three high-demand career clusters. With the constant change in the economy and travel and tourism trends, we do not feel a book is necessary at this time. The course material and assessments will be created by using CTE materials, online subscriptions, travel and tourism trade associations, marketing trade publications and resources, internet supplemental materials, and online media. The Business Department team loves what we do, and we are excited to embark on this new course adventure with our students. Keeping up with our theme, remember, business class today, first class tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi, thank you again for this. So is there any prerequisite for this? Like, do you need to take the marketing class before you take this class?
No, just like the international business classes in sports and entertainment, we don't think there should be a prerequisite on this.
In terms of grades, can any student in any grade take this?
So we were looking at 10th, 11th, and 12th graders.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing them, thank you for the presentation. This course sounds very exciting, a lot of fun, it's something to look forward to. I think for our students, I think there'll be a lot of interest, so I thank you for your presentation. The board had a presentation on this course earlier in the year. It has since gone through some revisions, which is why it's coming before us again as a first read. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any opening remarks?
Ooh, thank you, and these are, I'm going to take a little time here. So we are bringing the African-American, Black, Latino, and Puerto Rican Studies course back before the board as a first read. The significant change in this course proposal is reframing the course as a single-credit social studies course. The course is no longer connected to an English credit. We are bringing the course forward with an expectation that it will fulfill the U.S. history requirement under board policy. The educators of Fairfield have fulfilled their professional responsibilities in designing a course that meets the curricular and learning expectations of a U.S. history requirement. They have completed a curriculum crosswalk that details the overlap between our current U.S. history class, which fulfills the requirements, and the proposed course. It demonstrates significant overlap between the two courses. There is not complete coverage. Telling the American story in 182 days is always going to prevent complete coverage. You cannot tell the story from different perspectives and cover all of the same ground. What you can do is ensure that everyone who learns the story appreciates the richness of the past and the opportunities for the future. The proposed course is the telling of the American story from what has been, until now, an ignored perspective. We have also received endorsement from the State Department of Education. Such preparation is to be honored, as the social studies teachers and administrators in Fairfield take the responsibility seriously of protecting and preserving their discipline. We respect the board's intent to do the same. You rightfully are the gatekeepers of the TOC curriculum in the Fairfield Public Schools. This role takes on added importance when we are adopting a course that fulfills a graduation requirement. Our role is to prepare the curriculum for passage through the gate and to assure you that the proposed course meets our professional expectations. We have done this work. Reading and reviewing this curriculum presents some challenges to us. The current board-approved U.S. history course, by the nature of that approval, carries with them the stamp of the official history of the United States. This sanctioning excludes the histories of others. The unintended message is that any course lacking official acceptance is less worthy. The proposed course is not the frame through which a great number of us learned history. It is not structured the same, it is not told from the same point of view. None of these issues invalidate its need to be taught and its need to be recognized as equal with our current U.S. offerings. It has always pained me that the subject which led me into graduate school and in which I took with me into teaching has been one of the least appreciated courses to high school students. Thirty-five years ago, as I began my career, I would ask students why this was, and their answer inevitably was the same. They did not see themselves in the story. As we work to engage students in their schooling, we are fulfilling a long-passed due opportunity to allow students to see themselves in the story. And if students are engaged, maybe they continue to pursue other courses in history on their own. This course opens the gate for our students to grow in their appreciation of all of our stories. Having met the curriculum expectations of U.S. history, students must have the choice to take this course to fulfill their graduation requirement. So I'm going to ask Ms. Oliveri and Dr. Zavijancik if they can come forward.
Thank you.
Good evening again, James Zavijancik, Executive Director of Instruction, Curriculum and Assessment. Thank you again for allowing us to present the new Black, African-American, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies course. As you are aware, the impetus for this course was through the Connecticut State Legislature. Subsequently, the State Education Resource Center developed a full curriculum, including a scope and sequence, resources, learning tasks, and defined goals. Since our last meeting with the Board of Education and through feedback offered, we revised our course, and Ms. Oliver will present the course and its changes tonight. Briefly, some of those changes include the following. We removed the course's English credit and components. We present to you a single-credit social studies course with dual enrollment as an early college experience. You may notice some changes since its last iteration. Essential questions and understandings that were solely aligned with English language arts were removed. You will still notice that many of the standards for English language arts remain as a result of the interdependence between the content and skills and the Connecticut Common Core standards in language arts, which include literacy and history, social studies, science, and the technical arts. We continue to recommend this course as an early college experience, dual enrollment. Students who successfully complete this course will be able to earn college credit. Finally, in this proposal, we ask that this course satisfy the Fairfield Public Schools' high school graduation requirement for the 1.0 credits in U.S. history. This proposal was drafted and sent through the State Department of Education. Although the two courses are not identical and not intended to be, the course proposal tonight does incorporate crossover between the skills and content presented. In the board packet, you are provided the course's curriculum and the crosswalk document. In a moment, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Oliver, who will present both the course, the changes which have occurred, and the crosswalk document, which articulates the common themes, standards, and content that exist between our AP U.S. history course and the Black, African-American, Latino, and Puerto Rican Studies course before you tonight. Thank you for your time this evening and for your review of the course. As the course authors state in the document, this course will allow students to examine how historical movements, legislation, and wars affected the citizens' rights of these groups, and how they, both separately and together, work to build the United States' cultural and economic wealth and create more just societies in local, national, and international contexts. We believe this course will provide opportunities for its enrolled students to contribute to a variety, and to contribute to a variety of options and opportunities for our high school students when selecting their program of study. Thank you again, and Ms. Oliver will take you through the accompanying presentation and documents and answer follow-up questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Zavijancik. Good evening, Lisa Oliver, Director of Social Studies and Student-Centered Learning. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I appreciate the feedback that we received from the Board of Education and the questions that you had that helped us revisit the curriculum, the crosswalk document. And I'm looking forward to providing you with the additional information you requested tonight and the new course proposal for Black and Latino Studies. Some of this information may be a bit redundant, but I do want to be sure that I provide a thorough overview of this course to our newest Board of Ed member, and for those community members tuning in for the first time tonight. You can go to the first slide. Unfortunately, in PDF transition, it looks like the course slide was a bit compromised. But the course proposal was, of course, initiated by Public Act 1912. The Connecticut State Department of Education, in partnership with the State Education Resource Center, created this Black and Latino Studies curriculum. As I mentioned in my previous presentation, Connecticut is the first state in the nation to require their public high schools to provide a course in Black/Latino Studies. The law initiating this course was passed by the General Assembly with bipartisan support and unanimously approved by the state senate. It was signed into law by Governor Lamont in June of 2019. Once signed into law, CERC assembled a 140-member advisory group. Again, it consisted of nine separate committees, research and evaluation, focus groups, infrastructure, course syllabus, content development, assessment publication, dissonimation, and then professional Connecticut Board of Education unanimously approved the draft curriculum in December of 2020 as a full-year course on Black and Latino Studies. At FBS, we emulated the approach that the Connecticut Board of Education used, and we too assembled a committee. Beginning in the spring of 2021, we pulled together our committee of over 20 members, which includes some members that are students and are here tonight, teachers, social studies teachers, English teachers, library media specialists, parents, district and school administrators. Our mission and challenge was to take the new Black and Latino Studies course and to customize it for Fairfield Public Schools students so that it not only made it accessible to them, but it acknowledged and empowered them. We're very fortunate in the sense that this Black and Latino Studies course so closely aligns with our principles and needs that are outlined here on the right side of this slide. This Black and Latino Studies course supports the Board of Ed mission of recognizing, respecting, and promoting the dignity and the worth of every individual. This Black and Latino Studies course reinforces our district's efforts to support the needs of all learners, regardless of age, race, identity, religious beliefs, political affiliation, or special needs. And of course, it cultivates lifelong learners, responsible citizens, successful participants in an ever-changing global society through a comprehensive educational program. And of course, we see that it is endorsed and supports the FEC's Action Plan Number This next slide provides a course overview of the Black and Latino Studies course. The first bullet of the course overview is a change from our previous presentation. You see that this new course being presented tonight is, of course, a one-credit course rather than a two-credit course. It's no longer interdisciplinary. We remove the additional English credit from this proposal. Of course, this Black and Latino Studies course reinforces our quest to satisfy the vision of a graduate with the academic expectations, social and civic expectations as well. You see, you'll notice from this slide that I have a few points in bold, and those were points and questions that you all provided and we wanted to answer. So for example, this course provides FBS students with the opportunity to earn three college credits from Sacred Heart University. And that's what will happen. Since meeting with all of you on October 12th, we submitted our Black and Latino Studies course syllabus to Sacred Heart University's History Department. It was reviewed by them, it was evaluated, and I also met with Dr. McLaughlin and Dr. Loris from SHU, and it was approved on November 10th. Loris from SHU, and it was approved on November 10th. Fairfield Public School students taking this course will register, enroll, receive official transcripts from Sacred Heart University upon successful completion of this Black and Latino Studies course. It's worth noting that ECE Sacred Heart is different from ECE UConn, however. Sacred Heart is similar to the College Board in that high schools submit the course syllabus for approval, whereas with UConn, the instructors submit their credentials for approval. The process that Sacred Heart uses is much better because we avoid situations where students can only earn college credit for a course if their instructor has been previously approved. Sacred Heart recognizes that teachers that we have teaching early college experience courses are qualified to do so because we, here at Fairfield Public Schools, have verified their experiences and their credentials. We understand that the Board of Ed had some questions around the academic level of the Black and Latino Studies course. And we understand that that comes from a place of concern, and you want to ensure that our students are successful and feel supported. We share that concern. While AP and ECE are both college-level courses, they're very different. In that AP courses have a high-stakes standardized test at the end of the year that students must pass. That one AP exam on that one day determines whether a student has the potential to earn college credit. This high-stakes test in May often puts a great deal of pressure on students and teachers to rush through the curriculum at a rapid pace. ECE, however, does not have a high-stakes standardized exam at the end of the course. Students have opportunities to demonstrate their knowledge and their skills through a variety of different assignments, experiences, and assessments during the year. They have opportunities to improve their work. A single exam isn't used as the only success criteria. Students earn college credit if they successfully complete the ECE course. It's not about the test, it's about the course. As previously proposed in the last bullet point here, we are recommending that the Black and Latino Studies course be one of three options that students have to fulfill their junior-year history requirement. Students can choose to take a traditional U.S. history course. Also, they can choose to take the American Studies, which is an interdisciplinary course. And third, this Black and Latino Studies, and that is our proposal. This next slide outlines the course itself. We see here that the first semester is Black and African American Studies, and the second semester is Latino and Puerto Rican Studies. And the first semester has six units while the second semester has five units. Both semesters begin with exploring racial identity and the rich early civilizations of Africa, Central America, South America, as well as their contributions to the world. This is very important because our students are often introduced to their history and lineage through the Middle Passage and Triangular Trade instead of acknowledging the contributions of African, Central, and South American civilizations and the contributions and the developments made to art, architecture, science, and commerce in our world. Both semesters, whether it's a first semester or a second semester, end with more state and local history. Lastly, you'll notice at the bottom of this document, we have the final crosswalk of Black and Latino Studies and AP History. Based on the board's feedback, the committee returned to the crosswalk document, again, and did a deeper dive into the curricula document. You'll notice that there is a link to the crosswalk document at the bottom of this slide. The crosswalk document was also included in your packet of information on this course. This is the most recent iteration of several crosswalk documents that we engaged in as a committee to inform our thinking and to inform the proposal we have made and are making tonight. You'll see on the top left-hand column of the Black and, excuse me, you'll see on the top left-hand column of the crosswalk document, the Black and Latino Studies course, with the essential questions that drive the inquiry process and the social studies standards are listed underneath it. In the center column, we have the AP United States History course. Again, the essential questions and standards are listed below the heading. Finally, in the last column, you'll see the content topic overlaps. Three committee members, who have experienced teaching U.S. history, carefully combed through specific AP United States History lessons, materials, and activities, and compared and contrasted them with the units of study and the scope and sequence of the Black and Latino Studies curriculum from CERC. It was because we engaged in this process and this close examination of both courses side by side that we recommend that this course be one of three options available to our students. In addition to the parallels between the essential questions and the standards, the last column shows congruence of topics between the two courses. Mercantilism, natural rights, the Declaration of Independence, the Louisiana Purchase Manifest Destiny, Bleeding Kansas, Dred Scott Decision, the Gettysburg Address, Reconstruction, the Great Depression, New Deal, GI Bill, Cold War, civil rights. There are over 150 topics that are addressed in both courses. As far as the resource allocation, we are very fortunate to have the support of the Connecticut State Department of Education as well as CERC. When we look at professional development and capacity building, we have field study opportunities in the spring of 2021 where we can visit one of the 50 schools that are piloting this program this year. CERC, again, is offering a one-week summer institute. One board member had a question about when and what date that is exactly. They still haven't provided that exact date yet, but in my conversation with Michelle LeBrun from CERC, it should be forthcoming within the next few weeks. CERC also offers quarterly professional development, and of course, we would need substitute coverage for teachers to attend that. CERC has an inter-district partnership, a networking program, which is no cost. When we return from our summer training with CERC, we plan on spending some additional time, fine-tuning some unit implementation guides and common assessments. That's $1,800 per teacher. And then, of course, something new and different is the Open Education Resource Platform, which is just a repository of free lessons, activities, assessments, and that's no cost to us. As far as materials and personnel are concerned, we are purchasing two book bundles, one for each high school, and then CERC provides one for each high school's media center as well. Overall, the FTE impact is minimal or nonexistent. It's primarily just a reallocation of courses, of course assignments for teachers. Scheduling coordination is needed for shared PLT for teachers, and that would be no cost as well. So I am open, and we are open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for providing an update to this course and for taking the time, especially to do a crosswalk between the two courses. I found that very helpful and reassuring in just in terms of making sure that we are meeting the expectations for our students. Take it, Ms. Guernsey?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for preparing this and the answers to our questions. This was so helpful. I know enormous amount of work has gone into this course preparation, and just wanted to say the crosswalk was extraordinarily helpful, just fantastic document. I also wanted to add a personal apology from myself to the staff and parents and students that were involved in this curriculum development. I think that some of the words at this table at our previous meeting were hurtful to them, and I apologize for that on my behalf for what I said, but more importantly, for what I might not have said. So I just wanted to share that. And in addition, I was happy to see in the document the continued inclusion of Indigenous Peoples in this coursework. And I have a number of different comments about this course, all positive. And I've been thinking a lot about the title of the course, and this is not my expertise in choosing a title, but I wish that it could have the title U.S. History in the course because clearly it is a U.S. history course. The one question I have is about the sequence in taking this coursework. If there is a student that's a senior that's already taken a different U.S. history, would they be allowed to take this course as a senior, or would it be considered repetitious in some way? How would that be handled?
Well, yes, as a senior, students are open to taking this course as an elective. That's no issue with us whatsoever.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you for this and thank you for the, I want to say too, like as Ms. Guernsey said, the crosswalk is actually a very helpful document. I think I actually have a lot of questions about the crosswalk that I'll save for later. It's a little nitpicky type stuff. I'm curious to see how you're going to address some issues that I see are not here. But as Mr. Cummings said, I certainly recognize that in the vast sweep of several centuries of history, you can only tackle so many topics. So I am sensitive to the fact that you kind of have to pick and choose what is included and that heretofore, we have collected a specific set of topics that has excluded other topics. I just want to say that, you know, as a general topic, and I mentioned this last time, I think that one of the things that this course proposal calls out is the need to do further work on our core U.S. history curriculum. But I'm going to ask some other sorts of questions. I get, one of the questions that I wanted to ask specifically is, are you anticipating that going forward, this will only be a single-credit course? Or do you think that in future years, you may return to the two-credit interdisciplinary approach, and this is kind of what we're doing for now?
I think we very much so have to be open to that possibility. The CERC document drove so much of our decision-making. Fairfield put a great amount of care and consideration into our proposal. And, you know, just as we teach our students to, you know, use documents and data to make decisions, when we looked at the curriculum initially and we saw how dense it was, and we saw the ELE standards throughout the document, and we saw a rich opportunity there, it's something that we want to pursue in the future, and we'll continue to gather information, we'll continue to explore that in the future, no question.
I kind of prepared a follow-up thought to that, which I guess may be more appropriate to Dr. Zavajancik. I mean, I would hate for the literary aspect of this work to be discarded. I could see an absolute need and demand for a course for the kinds of materials that I think that the English department was anticipating for the other half of this course. And I don't know, do you have any thoughts for where that might go? And it's kind of off the topic of this discussion, but again, it's a large, you did a lot of work on it, and I would hate to see it simply discarded.
I think to Ms. Olivera's point, we are continuing to look at what the articulation is between them and what the connections are, and to build from the CERC document moving forward to see where it lands with the literature and the English Language Arts portion. But we would most certainly, if that's the direction we go in, bring a proposal forward with those standards and new additions to it.
All right, I guess a technical sort of question on the ECE credit. So you said that you submitted the course documents to Sacred Heart. Are they these course documents or the prior course documents?
So I have shared our curriculum proposal, I've shared the CERC document. We have a very strong but new partnership with Sacred Heart. But as far as the process is concerned with Sacred Heart and their approval or disapproval of a course, they're simply interested in looking at a course syllabus. So I submitted a course syllabus for this course.
For the single credit? I mean, I guess it's...
Yes, yes, yeah, for the single credit.
That's really what I was getting at.
Okay, sure, thank you.
All right, I may have more questions, but I'll turn it over to the other board members for now.
Any other questions? Ms. Maxicanelli?
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for taking into consideration some of our comments last time. I mean, I would reiterate Mr. Peterson's point of, I absolutely see fantastic potential for this with that crossover with the English. I think it's a wonderful interdisciplinary opportunity, just as I support the American Studies course, which has that interdisciplinary aspect. I do think it's wonderful. You know, I had just thought that it wasn't ready for it yet. But again, I completely support the idea of that coming forward. A couple of questions that I have. Regarding the CERC that you said you used as the basis for this, one of the things, though, that CERC said was that it did establish that U.S. history should be a prerequisite for this course.
So that is listed on the CERC document?
Yes.
The U.S. history in the model program of studies that they provided. I assure you, I have received correspondence in writing, and I have had several conversations with Steve Armstrong from the Connecticut State Department of Education, as well as Michelle LeBrun from CERC. And they see our approach as a model approach. It's not required. Again, that was just to provide school districts with a sample of ways that you can propose it. They are in full support of our proposal in this course being one of the options that our students have in satisfying their U.S. history course requirement.
Okay, I'll come back to that topic. A few other things I'd wanted to ask. With the ECE, just so our, obviously, the students will know this, but so that we're aware, what is the cost? Since I'm familiar with the UConn course, how would this one work?
It's $125 per three-credit, excuse me, per three-credit course.
Okay, which is a fantastic bargain, as all of the parents here know. So that's, thank you so much for having pursued that and having that ready for today because I know we were all concerned that that might not be ready in time with the course of study guide, and I think that's important that the students know that ahead of time because I do think that's a fantastic opportunity. In terms of the, obviously, and I believe it's Westport ran with the pilot this year. And I know that overwhelmingly, what I have heard about that from my colleagues and from those here in Fairfield was that the pilot was, just took on too much, that it was, obviously, it is an incredibly rich history. You know, each half of that course could be a full-year course. So I was wondering, what did Fairfield remove from that to make this, you know, to basically, we had the benefit of learning from Westport's experience, so what did we change?
So in our course curriculum document, it's a curriculum. So in the CERC document, it includes the implementation guides, right, the scope and sequence, as well as the units of study. So we, as a school district, will be attending that CERC training and continuing to do our implementation guide work over the summer. And that's when we continue to customize it, to refine it, based on the feedback that we gather from other school districts, and as we come closer to the execution and the implementation of the course.
Go ahead.
So this topic comes up at every state meeting for curriculum from the districts that are implementing it at this point, and you're right on, many of the districts say the same thing. It's pretty dense and needs to be updated as we go. It's pretty dense and needs to be updated as we go. The open source CT is where the state's updating it as it goes. It hasn't been put out yet. It's open access resource, but they are -- it's supposed to be a fluid document within there to take out, add, remove, and change. At this point, I don't want to speak for the History Department. I don't believe we've been in contact with Westport, to your question, at this point in terms of lessons learned, in terms of creating our document that's sitting before you today.
Okay, so, but your guess is that it'd be the case of, are they actually -- do you think we'll be removing topics, and that that's where we will end? Or is that the units themselves will not go to the extent and the depth?
It's hard to predict what the state will do with it. I'd imagine the units are going to -- the unit titles are going to stay. I know they're -- when I attend the curriculum meetings, they talk about some of the content, or as Ms. Oliveri talks about, the implementation guides and what could change within them.
Okay, so a big -- the future will tell.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, they were one semester in at the last meeting -- I shouldn't even say semester, one quarter in at the last meeting, where they brought in some districts to talk about their current implementation, and they were feeling some of the burdens that you mentioned.
Okay. And again, I also echo the thanks for the Crosswalk document. What it didn't have was the fourth column, which is, what are the differences? Which actually, I suppose, should be a fourth and a fifth, which would be, how does this course cover topics not covered in AP U.S. History, as well as what are topics in AP U.S. History not covered in this course? And I don't know if that is -- I don't know if there's any aspect of that that you can speak to now conversantly, or if that's something that we could find out more about later.
I would say if we can have some time to go through it so that we have an articulate answer for you on it without going through the document at the table, we can add the fourth and fifth.
But nothing that resonated, that nothing that stuck with you, having done that actual work of -- because obviously, as you were pulling it out, it should have been apparent that things were getting left behind. However, again, I can't -- the meticulous process of producing that list, truly thank you for that. It is very helpful. But again, it is that fourth and fifth column I'm also interested in.
Yes, I hear what you're saying. And, you know, I think that -- I'm not sure how to answer that question, and I want to attend to your question and answer it thoroughly and completely and candidly, with all candor. And I think that there would be, if we went through every part and parcel and did a compare and contrast of essentially the social studies courses that we offer, we'd find that. And I think Mr. Cummings spoke to that a little bit in his introduction. In speaking with Anna Newberg, who's on our committee and who has been teaching AP U.S. History for eight years, as recently as a conversation today, said that she doesn't think that there's anything conceptually or thematically that is missing. We could comb through the documents, and I'm sure would reveal things that are present in each exclusively, if that's what you're looking for. And we could do that. If you prefer that we do that, we can definitely do that.
I guess no, because obviously, I understand the idea of conceptually, that there's, you know, a very distinct mirroring. But, you know, when you have as one of the first conceptual questions, how has the American identity evolved? Well, in fact, you're not looking at how has the entire American identity evolved. In this new course, it's going to be from a very specific perspective and lens. It will not be all-encompassing. It will have more of a focus. And so that's -- and I am not faulting that. That is what this course should be doing. But the point is, things are not going to be covered in this course, which of course is the complaint about our current U.S. History course, is that things are left out, that there are voices and perspectives that I think usually we have been taking the view of, that we need to do better at. But that's what I'm saying. I absolutely agree with you, that conceptually, you'll have an essential question that gets hit in both courses, but in addressing it, you're going to be leaving voices out. You know, that American identity, how is that including, for example, the whole Native American aspect of the 30,000 years that they were here, you know, before 1607? You know, so there's a tremendous amount that won't be covered because of the perspective. And that's what I am interested in. I understand the essential questions. I'm talking about the content, the knowledge, the facts, the situations that have to be part of one course and that therefore can't be part of another. That's what I'm getting at, because as I've been very -- and I want to be very, very clear to everyone who is here and to all the staff who have worked on this. I think this course is fabulous. It is long overdue. One of our speakers tonight talked about, you know, future courses with a perspective focused on the Asian-American experience, the experience of Indigenous people, the lens of women, you know, not mentioned was the lens of LGBTQ citizens of this country. You know, these are all invaluable perspectives that have been underrepresented. But in having that focus, that -- so let me start first with just the pure positive. I think this course is wonderful. The perspective is long overdue. I would correct one person that came up in public comment that said, that referenced, this is our first step in diversifying, which is completely not true. We have been working on diversifying our curriculum. I think it's -- it has increased in very, very recent years, and it absolutely needs to continue as a commitment of staff and of the board to doing so. It's not enough. We're still working on it, but it certainly had begun years ago. So pause there. Wonderful course, thoroughly and wholeheartedly endorse it, and adding it, and I'm thrilled that our students will get this experience. I do remain not in favor of it fulfilling the U.S. History requirement. And I do that for reasons I sort of worked through at the last meeting, and has only continued the more I thought about it, and in asking other U.S. History teachers their opinion about this. And just knowing that, you know, one of our public comments was regarding the experience at Harvard and other universities, completely agree. If it weren't for the fact that this could very well be, as I said last meeting, the only U.S. History experience for some students, to have it be an experience which by necessity leaves out significant components willfully, that is something I have a hard time endorsing. Do I endorse the course? Yes. Is it invaluable? Yes. But the U.S. History requirement required by the state is meant to be a survey, and to willfully leave out a perspective -- that does not mean that this course is not U.S. History. Of course it is. It is a perspective. It is a lens that we need to hear more from and to explore more, and which will be incredibly valuable for our students of any cultural background. But for the survey U.S. History requirement, that is what I -- and by the way, this wouldn't necessarily be only an elective. If a student had -- and Mr. Cummings, of course, correct me if I'm wrong, or Dr. Zavjansik, if a student failed Global Ten, was unable to attend summer school, doubled up on social studies in their junior year, this would be fulfilling a social studies requirement. It's not just an elective. That is false. So it absolutely has multiple roles in this curriculum. But -- and I do agree with the idea, again, we have a course in which students see themselves. I agree with all of that. I don't believe that a course should only be one where a student sees themselves, where students see themselves, because there is such a thing, sometimes you have to learn history -- I don't need to tell this to the history teachers in the room. Sometimes you have to learn stuff where, when you're learning about the ancient Greeks, you are not learning -- you are not seeing yourself necessarily, but it is an important part of our history. And that is my reservation about this course. You know, I'm maddened, obviously, I spoke with Dr. Zavjansik about the year-long requirement, because just, I mean, as something as simple as taking Accounting II and bringing it to a semester, you're going to get greater enrollment. I likewise am very frustrated that we can't offer this additionally as to one-semester options. I think that would be a great benefit to our students. But I actually view this as a course that can contribute to the achievement gap by being much more isolated and much more focused, and therefore not introducing our students to topics, and they might be topics in which they don't see themselves, but for future conversations and other engagements in their life, to have left that out willfully in their history, that is my very strong reservation. And again, I want to end, though, with thanking you for bringing this back to us with the changes. I'm very excited about this course for our students.
Any other comments before Ms. Rotelli?
Hi. Can you tell us what the history requirements are for ninth and 10th grade?
So freshman year, our students take Global Studies, and sophomore year, students take Modern Global Studies.
Any other questions? Ms. Guernsey, back to you.
Oh, this is a new question? Is that --
Just a follow-up. No, you can --
I just had a question about the marketing of this program, and just wondering if there's a special plan that you would have for it so that it doesn't get lost in the Program of Studies? Specifically, I'm thinking about, is there a way that you would plan to bring this to our rising juniors and seniors directly and during their current social studies classes? I mean, I'm not sure, but what outside of the normal guidance process would be additionally available for this course?
So outside of the normal, I mean, that's one of the benefits of assembling a committee of stakeholders that consists of students. And, you know, we've thought of things like video clips or presentations, and having some of our committee members, our student commitment -- excuse me, our student committee members come into courses and classrooms, share their experience, their knowledge with the course. We'll continue to, of course, spend time in our history courses, speaking about this particular course, in addition to all of the social studies offerings, as we typically do. And program directors meet with the different school counselors in the different high schools to go over different and new course offerings, so that our school counselors are clear about the new course, its content, what requirements it may satisfy, the potential of what it looks like to colleges and universities when they're looking to recruit students to attend their schools.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Maxicanelli?
Just one other question. I appreciate that this was a comparison to the AP U.S. History. How would this -- where would this fall on the GPA-weighted grade scale, and therefore, how does that translate to the level of difficulty of the course? I mean, obviously, we had this, not that there's exact comparison, but the Tourism course is a zero-level -- we still have the zero level, right? Yes. Still have the zero level. How would a student be guided to this course? Because obviously, AP U.S. History, AP anything, is not appropriate for every student at every point in their academic experience. So it obviously qualified for Sacred Heart, but other than that, I'm unclear on how it's suited to whichever students.
So like advanced placement courses, it's five-level. Our students will be earning college credit through this course, and also, like the College Board, we will have open enrollment.
Again, I think that's -- I worry about that, because while I want it to be accessible to all students, I recognize how important that college credit component of this is, and that teacher's going to have a challenge, but --
Ms. Teresa?
Yeah, I just kind of echoing, that was one of my concerns last time, and still, is we talk about recruitment for this class, right? Who's going to sign up for it? And I have elementary kids, so I haven't experienced high school yet, so I'm not as keenly aware on AP and college credit and whatnot. But when I hear AP and college credit, I think of a much more rigorous course, and will that narrow the pool of students that will be interested in signing up for this class?
Is your question, is because it's an ECE course, you think it's going to narrow the pool of applicants?
Because if it's a difficult course at an AP level or a college credit level, are we leaving out the students that may not be at that level, or want to learn at that level but still deserve the education?
I understand the concern. One of the things we are looking at is the enrollment of our courses at the levels, obviously, to provide equitable access to all students. We do know that the role of the teacher, obviously, in scaffolding that instruction for students is really important in the mindset. I understand the concern that some, I think what you're saying is, some kids may look at this and say, I can't take on the challenge perhaps, or it's too much of a challenge. And we do want to work through the counselors and the teachers to promote the course as a course, as all our AP courses are, I should say, not just this one, but that they can do the -- they can take on the challenge with the help of the teacher, and can be successful in that as well in doing that. So I don't want to think that this is, you guys to think that this is promoted only for students who are on sort of an AP track at this point, but for all students who want to take the course. And I think Ms. Oliveri would echo that and be able to earn that credit. We know that students who sort of take these courses and do well in them and have those early college experiences in AP credits do far better in other courses and in college as well by having that experience.
I just want to add to that response, as Dr. Zavjansik alluded to this, but if you think back to the data we presented on October 26th, and as part of our data presentation on the 26th, one of our concerns is the enrollment of, this is aggregated enrollment in leveled courses in our high schools. And this course, your concern, Ms. Teresa, falls within our concerns of how we have to support students to be successful in those courses and to be able to access those courses. Because if we allow that, if we don't do anything to begin to address that situation, then the situation isn't going to get any better, right? So we've got to think about, within our high school, and even our middle school programs, the appropriate ways to work into the schedule, interventions to give students access for the extra help that they may need. And it may be some of the things we do over the course of the summer after school, and that's really to support all students, so that they know if they're taking a chance, they're going to be supported in the chance-taking.
Any last comments? I want to, again, just reiterate my support for this class. I do view this as a U.S. History class. You know, I was a political science major, and I look back, why do we teach history? We teach history so our students know where they came from. I think that the more perspectives that we can give students, the better. I think it also, we teach history so students can have an appreciation of where we are today. And I look back to some of the classes that I took, looking back, I wish I had this course. I said at our last meeting, I think that it really adds depth to our curricular offerings in social studies, provides student choice. I thank those students who participated in the work and spoke today. I hear Mrs. Maxicanelli's, you know, concerns, and it brings up a larger, I think, issue or conversation of how we view history and what is the survey? You know, who decides? Who decides what the appropriate survey of U.S. History will be? I did have concerns, which was why I appreciate the Crosswalk in terms of hitting key historical events, that I think it's important that all of our graduates know and have upon graduation from the Fairfield Public School. So I thank you, again, for the work and for the presentation.
Thank you. On behalf of the Black and Latino Studies Committee, we appreciate your feedback and your insights in helping us.
Okay, moving on to old business, approval of World Language Course, American Sign Language. At the Board of Education, approve the World Language Course, American Sign Language. Kind of a motion? Mrs. Kind of a motion, Mrs. Gerber, a second by Ms. Rotelli. Any follow-up discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Any members of the public like to give comment on this, approval of this course before we vote? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Motion ca-
Can I go up? Yeah. Can I allow it? The audience, you never approve it?
No, we did, I'm sorry. If you want to submit your comments on this, you can email the board, but we have voted and motion carries eight zero.
One thing really quick is at the end of our meeting, we do allow for public comment on agenda items. So if you're willing to hang out, you might have another opportunity.
Okay, moving on, adoption of policy 3524, green cleaning program. The Board of Education adopt policy 3524, green cleaning program. Kind of a motion, Ms. Maxicanelli, a second, Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Maxicanelli, any?
I received no questions about it. I don't know if people were holding it for the table tonight, but it's, I consider it pretty straightforward, so.
Any questions? Seeing none to the public. Any members of the public like to give comment on this policy before we vote? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Discussion of 2022-2023 budget drivers follow-up. Mr. Cummings?
Really, we put this on the agenda to see if there is any further comments or questions about the, both the, I know the board presented some concerns at the October 12th meeting and we are, well, we're working through that as we work on the budget. But also, if there was any follow-up from the conversation we had at the 17th, the meeting on November 17th, where we presented some of the kind of big ideas that we were considering for the budget. I know that that night, there was relatively little discussion and knowing you all, that surprised me. So we wanted to make sure that we covered some things because we are, tomorrow being December 1st, we're in the last rush to get the budget completed, hopefully before the holiday break and get it ready to you for early January presentation. So that's why we wanted to make sure that there was time for that.
So really, back to the board for any just follow-up questions or thoughts, if anything that was presented on the 17th that you're feeling, I will not support that in the budget or I don't think it should be moving forward in terms of initiatives, I think now would be an appropriate time just to share any concerns with staff as they finalize the budget. Mrs. Maxicanelli?
I guess, you know, for some of the recent initiatives, you know, we got the big picture, things would be continuing, but we didn't get is any data that they've, and it's early. You know, again, the easy one to think about is the early literacy effort that we're making is that we obviously don't have any data yet to back up that it's achieving what we want. So just in terms of what I'd be interested in in the future is just some, you know, follow-up on some of the things that we have recently invested in.
Specifically to the Early Literacy Academy, Mr. Mankusi and staff will be presenting an update on that, I think, at the first January meeting. And we will have, we're hoping to have both achievement data as well as some economic data to share with you, at least the early signs of that. But I would say to you, if there's a specific program, because when I start to think of programs, the list just grows in my head. So if there's a specific program or idea that you'd want us to look at, just let me know and we will do what we can, you know, to gather the relevant information and bring it back to the board.
Just for my own follow-up, the social worker outreach coordinator, I would be interested in just seeing a job description, if you have it now or just something that could be forwarded. I'm hesitant just to add, you know, another administrator and just getting some more feedback from what the social workers that we had in this last budget cycle.
Thank you. We would, if we bring that position, you know, we talked about that again on the 17th as a concept, if we bring that forward as part of our 2223 budget, we will absolutely include a job description with that, as we've done in the past when we talk about any new positions, you know, qualifications, things like that, we would bring that all to you.
And I think a follow-up just to that position, if it's something that you see needing in response to some of the challenges presented from living through a pandemic, do you see it being ongoing or could potentially this position be short-lived? So just more, more color into that. Mr. Asa?
Just more of a comment to Mr. Cummings, as you work through these final stages of the budget and you and the administrators and stakeholders decide of new initiatives and new actions to add, obviously, in this last 18 months, we've developed a large group of students who have either fallen behind or have mental issues. Teachers are going to be tasked with dealing with this for years. So I'm sensitive to any kind of new initiatives without a deeper dive into kind of what you've said in the past. If we're going to do something new, where are we going to find the staff, the time, the money for it? And, you know, I just, I'm a little hesitant on, nothing specific to this, but adding more work to our, to our staff now, there, many of them are working harder than ever to meet the needs of our kids. And you add all of this other social, emotional learning and all of these other aspects to it, which are important, we just have to be cognizant of how much more can the staff handle? And that being said, if the answer is more support, more FTE, where is that going to come from?
Ms. Kelly?
I just, I know that we talked a little bit about the block scheduling and I'm assuming that there's more, there's more to follow-up on that because I personally have a lot of reservations and questions about that and I really appreciate getting the heads up so far in advance on that. But I would really hope that we can get a deeper dive into hearing directly from the middle school administrators, directly from them. And again, lots of reservations there, so would just like to, I need a better sense of what's happening there.
Absolutely. The middle school administrators will be here presenting in two weeks on the 14th.
As always, anything comes to you, just email the superintendent. Moving on, new business math academy update. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any?
Yes, of course I do. So I know Mr. Wakeman and Dr. Savicinzek are coming back up, but I just want to thank Mr. Wakeman for being here this evening to discuss the future of the math instruction in the elementary schools. And a more full presentation on changes in the pre-K5 curriculum as well, as well as the proposed changes in the 612 curriculum will also be presented on December 14th. But tonight, because they are, they are finishing up their curricular review, but tonight, for tonight's purpose, we really want just to focus on the questions have been about the grade four and five students in math academy, in math academy and how we're going to address those issues in the coming year. I want to be clear that in what we're talking about tonight, the current grade four students in the math academy would go forward into grade five at Holland Hill. But there would, what we are proposing is that there would not be a grade four program. So just a quick history, the Board of Education sought the creation of the math academy, which started in the 1819 school year. But really, since its inception, the board has expressed several concerns about the program. One of those concerns is related to its location and it centralized at Holland Hill and then the lack of provided transportation for students, which has limited access to students who, and created inequities in students' ability to access the program. The hiring of additional staff at times and the cost of the program have also been a concern. So we, as well, the administration and central office and in our elementary schools have identified that we also have a disparity among schools, students selected and with some schools not having any students select over the past three years at all for the math academy, while the constant number has been around 40 each of the three years for students to be identified, 40 rising fourth graders. So in order to address these issues of equity and access and not to incur more costs, we have had to make changes in the current structure. And it is changing essentially the nature of the program as our speakers tonight, as the folks who called in identified. Based on these concerns, we've developed an offering that provides access to all students but changes the program focus. We cannot keep the current focus on acceleration. Replicating, and I think inherent in everybody's understanding of this, but it needs to be said, replicating this program at 10 other elementary schools is not possible, one for a matter of cost, but also with 40 students on average identified over the past three years, we would, we would not have essentially enough students to justify the hiring of full-time staff. We can't replicate what everybody has spoken about as the, as the best benefit of this program, and I mean this very broadly, the nature of the classroom experience for those students, to be with like-minded students, to have the accelerated curriculum. We just can't do that, bringing it back out of its current location. So what we are proposing instead is exchanging the idea of acceleration for a greater depth of learning for all students. There are going to be, we expect it will be some small expenses for resources and materials, particularly in this first year, but not at a current cost level that we're paying for the, for the math academy. And Mr. Wakeman and his staff, the MST's at our schools, have really spent quite a bit of time developing an enrichment model that we're going to share with you this evening. But again, I just want to point out that the inherent nature of the program changes as a result of this difference in approach. So Mr. Wakeman, Dr. Savicinzek?
Good evening again. James Evagencik, Executive Director of Instruction Curriculum and Assessment. In spirit of providing an equitable and appropriate math expectations to all of our students, we present to you the anticipated additions to our elementary math challenge programming for our elementary schools. As you see from the public documents before you, we present a change which integrates a 45-minute, one-time per cycle, which is six days, elementary school challenge integration for each of our 11 buildings. Instructed by the classroom teacher, all students will have access to the program, which will promote mathematical creativity, problem-solving, and introduction to mathematical concepts. Tonight, I'm joined by Mr. Wakeman, who has worked with his team of teachers and MST's, who will present to you the goals of the program and answer any questions regarding the math challenge program before you tonight.
Thank you. Walter Wakeman, Program Director for Elementary, Mathematics, Science, and Enrichment. First of all, thank you for letting me be here to speak to you and address some of your questions. Before I start to explain some things, I have to give a huge shout-out to the Fairfield teachers who have brought us to this point on our journey in mathematics, in elementary mathematics program. There's been a huge amount of work, there's been a huge lift to bring us to this point. I also would like to also preface this by thanking the teachers who started this summer and bringing some, forward some of these things that I'm about to share with you right now. So some of the proposed ideas in addressing the needs of all students across the district, one was just mentioned was the idea of a challenge group, which would be offered once in a six-day cycle by the classroom teacher for 45-minute session. So that means that all students would have access and opportunity to participate in that, in that group. There is also the potential of students participating, or schools participating in a math competition, if you will. And, but more concerned to me is the regular access that all students would have to this rather than the competition component of this. The, as I mentioned, it would be taught by the grade four and five teachers, it would not be considered a special. It would be, and it would also not be in lieu of regular mathematics instruction. We did talk with the elementary principals about this in terms of scheduling. They do admit that there would be some challenges around the scheduling, but have committed to being able to find the, find the minutes needed to be able to hold this once in a six-day cycle to provide kids an opportunity to participate in this. The challenge group or the challenge really focuses or centers on problems, problem-based, problems that students would be engaged in, a variety of different types of problems, expose students to a number of different strategies on how to approach problem-solving as well as collaborate in this problem-solving as well. So as also was mentioned, there's multiple prongs to addressing this concern across the district for all students. Another area is that additional resources, tasks have already been embedded in our current units, kindergarten through grade five. They are not fully implemented at this point. We're currently working on building teacher capacity on what are, how do we address that? And what does it look like in a classroom? The intent is not to have a, to, a classroom teacher having to plan two separate lessons, but rather that the tasks are aligned with the current lessons and big ideas within a unit and can be used as small group, either individually for kids and individual tasks for kids or engage kids in small group activities. The resources that have been provided so far are very clearly outlined, aligned with the standards. So it'd be easy resource for a teacher to say, these are the standards we're working on, these are the standards I'm addressing with these kids, here are some tasks that I can preview and think about, how do I support those kids? Again, available to all kids, kindergarten through grade five, not just the fourth and fifth grade kids specifically. Additionally, what we have done, and again, this is part of some of this curriculum review that we were, that Mr. Cummings was talking about, is looking at revising our units in some areas that we need to enhance, not in terms of standards, but in terms of how we're addressing the standards. And so in grades two and three in particular, actually in grade one as well, we, there was some revision work done with some of the units. And that is an experience that all kids are going to be participating in because those are embedded in, are in teachers' hands in the pacing guides. And so that will, and some professional learning has already been presented or provide, time has been provided for teachers to kind of look through those units and think about how they are going to support kids in that process. And lastly, this is more of a long-range plan. This is, this district is a, is a big wheel and it takes a long time to turn, turn over. And that is building teacher capacity around differentiating up. There is some work underway on how do we challenge all learners? You could think of this as an extension of the SRBI work, except that we're not just focusing on students perhaps who are struggling, but in the tier one, in the core, how are we challenging all kids? There was one comment that struck me by one of the students had called in, was talking about finishing work early and then having a math packet. That begs a lot of questions for me in that classroom. So it is not just a one blanket response that all teachers will address that child's concern this way. What it is, is who is a child doing the work for? Is it, is a child turning in the work because they need to complete a task and that's the expectation of the teacher? Or is a child doing the work because they're interested in learning the mathematics? Or is it completing the work and it is about task completion rather than thinking about, more deeply about the mathematics and the implications? Or what are the opportunities for that child to go more in-depth around the concepts that are being addressed in the classroom? Is it a repertoire issue? In other words, is it not just a teacher expectation that the child submits the work, but the child has finished it, they've met the expectation, we're going to move on? Could be another issue or perspective that the teacher has. And/or it might even be, how do I challenge this child? This child's finished the work, I'm not sure what to do with this kid next. The reason I presented so many different responses just to that one child's comment because they all have different solutions. And so thinking about how are we building capacity of teachers, we need to get to the nature of, well, what are the specific issues related to a specific comment like that? And providing the supports and the professional training to build the repertoire of all teachers and to share their experiences in order to challenge all of our students. So again, the eye and the attention and the focus here is to think about how are we challenging up and going more in-depth in the mathematics? And what are some things that teachers can use to think about in doing that and providing them with some support and training on that? And I would just like to say that the math science teachers have done some work already this summer and are engaged in some of this work currently as we're going through the course of this year. of this year, and working with teachers in their own buildings, a small group of teachers, with the idea that we're going to be growing this over time, as we all gain greater expertise in that area. So, that's where we are at the moment, but that's where we're looking to move forward. So, open for questions.
Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to us. I guess I know you touched on it briefly, saying that talking to the elementary school principals, and there being concerns about finding the time, you know, the additional 45 minutes. You know, we've had a lot of discussions during budget season, talking about, you know, the principals being concerned about students being under a tremendous amount of mental stress and strain, and needing additional social work help. I just am concerned that trying to carve out an additional 45 minutes every six days, I understand, might create more stress. And I think too, it's important to understand that, or to consider, I guess I should say, that, you know, first of all, we're talking about, you know, we hear these stories from the children who are in the Math Academy right now, and they're very compelling, because they obviously feel like they've found a place, and wouldn't it be wonderful if all children could find a place like that? And very clearly, and, you know, we all realize that this is not going to equal that. So my concern is that then you have these students who perhaps would have benefited from the Math Academy, who won't be getting that additional help. And you will also be having students for whom an additional 45 minutes of math really isn't going to be anything that they are going to be looking forward to or enjoying, and that could create additional stress as well. And I have no doubt that, you know, encouraging students to do more with math, and to learn more, and have this kind of diversification of, you know, expanding on things, certainly will serve some, many, hopefully, students well. But I am concerned that it will also create additional stressors for the students who benefited from the Math Academy, and those for whom perhaps additional math is not really going to be anything that's going to be particularly helpful to them. So those are just my concerns, I realize, obviously, you know, that's a lot to unpack, and I'm sure you're completely aware of this, but I did just want to bring that up, is just reading this and hearing your description, while I completely understand the importance of trying to encourage these students, and looking at these numbers, and seeing that they've gone up, and wanting to reach those students, but I just worry that we're creating additional problems as well for many students, while trying to solve this other problem.
Any response to that? I don't know.
Happy to respond, I just didn't know if there was a question, but...
Well, all right. Just, any thoughts on that?
Yes, I do have some thoughts on that. You know, some may have a different perspective, but I think mathematics is fun. And...
I completely agree with that, but not everyone feels that way. I mean, let's just be honest here, for some, additional math will be an additional stressor.
Right.
And I do think we need to acknowledge that.
I do hear that, and I do acknowledge that. So, when we were talking about differentiation, some of it is around learners' disposition around mathematics. How do they feel about themselves as math, in engaging in mathematical thinking? Right? And so I did share with you that teachers have done a tremendous amount of work to get us to where we are. I do think we have the next level of work, and I think it's a very exciting next level of work. And that is, how are we engaging all learners to become passionate about mathematics? And if they're not passionate, why not? What is it that we need to do to reach those learners? How do we provide them with access? And oftentimes, it's kids who may be struggling, but we just heard tonight as well about a child who didn't feel comfortable taking risks in the classroom, didn't feel comfortable with the teacher. So again, it begs a lot of questions. What is it that we're doing that we're not reaching these kids? And I think a lot of this is around working with the teachers and identifying some of these concerns. We have been working on some of this already, about how are we building that mathematical culture in the classroom? And then how are we engaging all kids to think more deeply about the mathematics, and get excited about finding solutions, even though they may be vastly different? I'm catching myself, because I can tend to go off the wheel and get...
And just one other thing that I meant to mention as well, is that another concern I have is also the additional work that we're giving our teachers. You know, they've been asked to do a tremendous amount of heavy lifting. Well, they always are. In the past two years, they have even more so. And now, I think, to add this additional wrinkle to the work that they do so well every day, is asking an awful lot, when they are still dealing with the ramifications of teaching throughout a pandemic, and also the ever-increasing, you know, pressure in terms of student achievement, and, you know, kind of pushing things down, so that, you know, kindergarten is now more like first grade, and that type, you know, it just, it keeps building up, and it's stressful for students, and it's stressful for teachers as well. And so I just think that that's something else to keep in mind. And again, it's not really a question, I'm just kind of putting out there the concerns that I have, while I completely, you know, understand and respect, and realize that there, something needs to be done, I get that, but I just am concerned that this may create more problems than it solves.
So if I may comment on that.
You may.
Yeah. I agree, that there have been a lot of stressors. And a part of this is why this needs to be long-term, we need to be able to move forward. We have the kids in front of us today, so we need to continue to work on that. But we also need to take into perspective, where are the kids at the moment, their ability and access to learning, as well as the teachers being able to, where they are at this moment as well. That being said, I want to piggyback on that, in terms of thinking about new and different, it's about who's doing the work. And if the teachers are doing the majority of the work, what we're trying to do is to shift the climate and have, how we engage in kids and doing the work, how we engage in kids and doing the thinking. And what are some instructional strategies that we can help support, both the teachers and the students, in supporting those efforts?
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, I'm going to go down that side.
Hi. I have, it's nice to finally put a face to the name, so...
I can get right up to you.
Okay, is that better? I have, similar to Ms. Gerber, I have reservations about the 45 minutes every six days. My concern here, as I shared this earlier in an email, is that this, right now, feels to me like we are putting something in place only because we're taking something away. I feel like, if the Math Academy never existed, would we be proposing this six-day, every six-day, 45-minute block, just because it is going to address the needs of the students in a better way? My gut is, and I'm completely speculating, is no. I don't think this would be an agenda item. I'm guessing, maybe it is part of the K-5 math curriculum review, but I feel like we're forcing it here, it feels like to me that we're forcing it here just because we're taking something away. And I don't necessarily know if the idea of doing something is, sometimes it's better off right now to do nothing. And I'm not saying nothing is the answer, but I just don't think this something. I know the caveat is, we're not trying to recreate it, we're never going to be able to recreate it. And as everyone here is not a stranger to me, not being an advocate of the Math Academy, that doesn't mean it wasn't a wonderful program. And I want to be very clear about that. And everybody who came out and speaks highly of it, it's amazing, it's amazing what we did, I just don't think that was the right model either, to be honest. So I'm concerned, that's my biggest concern, is that this feels like, again, if the Math Academy didn't exist, I don't see this even coming to the table. But, I have others, but I don't know.
I can respond to that, Ms. Kelly, I think, I think there's, your comment is fair, I think, you know, when we were essentially, as the concerns over the Math Academy have emerged over the past couple of years, essentially part of our task was to say, what replaces it, or what do we look at? Because there was a recognized need in our current curriculum and instruction, that opportunities to explore math in depth were not necessarily available to students. And then couple that with the concerns that we were trying to, the goal was to make this an equitable experience for all students, that all students would have an opportunity for it. So in a way, it does follow on the heels of the Math Academy, because, to your point, if it hadn't, if the Math Academy had existed, likely wouldn't be having this conversation. But the Math Academy being eclipsed, in a sense, creates this hole, or this need, a hole that we've identified as, you know, as a need. Inherent with our proposal is the idea that it is not a, it's not a replicable program, you know? I think, as Mr. Wakeman has pointed out, and I want to just take a minute, take a step back out, because one of the concerns that is expressed to the board, and to some of the comments that Ms. Gerber made, there's work going on in the district around math instruction at all levels, but particularly right now at the elementary, some very exciting work that's going on, that we don't have always the opportunity to present to the board and give the board some of the context. So without that background of the work, particularly that's happening right now at Osborne Hill, I think if we were able to explore that more in-depth, and hopefully maybe in the spring we can do that, that might provide some of the assurance, or reassurance that people need in helping to make, be comfortable with this decision. Because we're transitioning from what is a current solution to a future and better solution. But it's not plug-and-play. You know, Math Academy was relatively simple to put in place and do, and I'm not taking anything away from all the work that Mr. Wakeman and the staff did to make it happen. Transitioning to make that happen for every student in some way is just going to take more time, because now we have to work at 35 teachers across at least two grade levels, if not more. So, as I said, I think it's a very fair comment you're making, but please know that we're responding to the requests of the board in doing this, and we think it's the right thing to do for kids.
It is reassuring to know that there's other things in the work, obviously, and that is noted in here, that this is not the end game, which I appreciate. I don't know, obviously, we're not privy to what that looks like, or what you're thinking about, but I feel like, and I don't know if the model still exists, and I've mentioned this before in other, I want to say, two years ago maybe even, I don't understand why something like the TIDE model, that my, you know, elementary school kids did with, you know, I believe it was, you know, language arts or English at the time, you know, being able to rotate from the two or three sections of fourth and fifth grades. A, it provides a movement break, if nothing else. The kids get to move around, go see, you know, and to me, that feels like a better way to differentiate, in a way, and, you know, equitable to everyone, accessible to everyone. And it doesn't just meet the needs of the exceptional learners, it's giving the kids who really need the extra help, their time. They are with their like-minded peers, you know? I feel like there's, there just seems to be a better opportunity, this doesn't sit well with me, the proposed solution, and I know, again, I know it's not a one-for-one swap, but this is, I just don't know how much value-add there is in this proposal, and that's just, it's alarming to me. And I know that it's probably unsettling to say, we're taking away and doing nothing, but even just hearing you say, like, we are doing something, we just can't see it right now. And I don't think there's any shame in saying, we have something, it's just not ready. What we have right now is not sustainable, and it's not working, we got to take it off the table for now, we've learned from it, we're going to let the kids who are currently in it finish. But I just think, again, there's no shame in saying, we are working on something. And that's, I'm just going to leave it, leave it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Peterson?
Well, I want to say thank you. You know, my, a lot of my objections to the Math Academy programs through the years were focused on, what about the kids who are not in it? And I certainly take your point that, I don't even want to call this a work in progress, because clearly you're beginning something here that has been long, long thought about, and is trying to, seems like trying to take lessons away from the Math Academy, which from the beginning, I was hopeful that that was going to be kind of a laboratory experiment that you would be able to generate ideas for instructions further down the road. And I don't know that we wouldn't be having this conversation, because I remember in the genesis of the Math Academy, we were talking about better differentiation in the elementary classroom for math. So I think that that was a conversation we were already having. And certainly is a thing, a concern that I've had moving along, and I'm very happy to see it in here. I just wanted to say, again, I think that this is the right way to go, if this is not the final plan, I get that, you have to see how things work on the ground, and obviously there's a lot of professional development that needs to go into this. I think that this is definitely moving in the right direction, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate it.
Mrs. Max Cunnelli?
Thank you. Again, appreciate the work, thank you for the information ahead of time. I have been unapologetically one of the biggest fans of the Math Academy. When I made the motion in last year's budget cycle to reinstate it, yes, it helped that I loved the program anyway, but more importantly, it was because there is a recognized academic need that Fairfield Public Schools was not meeting. And I felt it was negligent on the part of the board to drop a program that is serving students whose academic needs were not being met. And the idea was, and again, completely understandable due to COVID, there had been no time for the type of staff, you know, time commitment to come up with something in lieu of that. And I recognize that while this is, you know, a couple pieces of paper, there was a lot of work that went into just producing this, and I appreciate that. And I actually find much of this very exciting for many students to have this chance to engage on math more deeply, and to get excited about something that they otherwise might not have. However, it's still not serving the kids whose academic needs weren't being met prior to the Math Academy. And that remains my concern, and that's where, I have some of the same concerns as Ms. Kelly, that this is about enrichment, not acceleration. Math Academy was about acceleration. When you have, and that's where I have no interest in hearing more about the differentiation, because while differentiation happens within a very narrow scope, it does not serve these students. If we take, and the high school model is easier for me to relate it to, you take a student who belongs in multivariable calculus, and put them in an Algebra I class, there is nothing that teacher can do to differentiate or deepen the curriculum of Algebra I that will in any way engage that multivariable calculus student. I mean, to me, listening to the children who called in was actually a little bit horrifying, that they can't raise their hand, because they always know the answer, this is boring for them. And they are going to disengage in it, and impacts them in a variety of ways, that is detrimental to them as a person and as a learner. That, I mean, they're practically, could be used as the teacher assistant in those classes, but their academic needs aren't being met. Now, look, I know I've lost the argument in us maintaining the Math Academy, I get that, but that's why I was so enthusiastic about it. And so, to me, while this looks actually very exciting in many ways, maybe for engaging kids who are math-resistant, and maybe also for kids who are strong, and who could get better, and the math competitions, I love all that, it still is not providing an alternative curriculum for the students who don't belong in fourth-grade math. And that's what I'm interested, and again, that's where I'm very interested in, in at least some feedback on why we would not pursue what Ms. Kelly said regarding, with fourth and fifth grade, having the students move, and what I don't want to do, I have no interest in letting students feel like they've been labeled as being in the slow group, because that has a whole bunch of negative repercussions. But if you say, for example, you had four classes, there's two that are of one level, there's two that are at a different level, I do think that the MST should be involved in delivering curriculum that's on a whole other level. That's how the Math Academy can go, in terms of purely math curriculum could be accelerated in every elementary school. You won't have the engagement of math in social studies, and the ELA, and all the ways that math impacts the nine-to-three-thirty day of the Math Academy students, but they can still have the Math Academy math acceleration. And that's what I'm interested in. And, you know, we've been talking about equity of access, I would be very curious of these students, you know, who are going into that Pre-Algebra VII, you know, not just in, who was in the Math Academy, but who are these students? And I have a feeling that there is some disparity there, that we are not addressing, and doing this program and leaving kids that, okay, the ones who go to Pre-Algebra VII are the ones who can take that summer acceleration, who have tutors, or who have ever to support them, and all that's doing is leaving behind the very, some of the very students that we don't want to be in that position. So, again, I like this in its own right, kind of to Mr. Cummings' point, we might have been looking... have been looking at something like this, you know, or, or to Mr. Peterson's point, that this might have been something we're looking at, but it has nothing to do with the kids that the Math Academy were serving. And those are the students who get the acceleration, not the enrichment, the acceleration, and I'm interested in Fairfield Public Schools having, you know, and if, for those who are capable of embracing excellence, academic excellence. I definitely agree with Mrs. Gerber's point that, you know, finding this 45 minutes, though, will be very challenging, you know, at a time when I would love to be talking about adding a emphatic, you know, definitive, outdoor, unstructured time recess, you know, and, and it's, there's only so much time, but I'd love that conversation. I think maybe this brings up the conversation of our gifted and talented program. It has a choice of having a skills focus or a content focus, and maybe this needs to be part of that conversation of turning towards more of a content focus, and it could be wrapped up in that. Just one, of all my comments written in the, the margins, I don't want to forget any of them, but again, I'll just say that it's, having the focus of engaging all learners misses the point of the Math Academy, and that is what I have yet to hear, how those children are served. So there's the question to you, Mr. Wakeman.
So, I include the students who are in Math Academy in the word "all." And the idea of differentiating, differentiating up, there are strategies teachers can use. I understand in high school, there's a more significant gap than there is at the elementary, but there are opportunities within our current programming to address needs of students for whom mathematics comes more easily, and there are some teacher mindsets, tools, strategies that can be employed, just as a general approach on how to address needs of high-performing students. So it, will it reach every single student? That is to be seen, but I, I do believe that investing in the district's greatest asset, our teachers, and how we address the needs of kids is a path that I think is worthy and supporting of these, of these students, those, those kids who need that type of challenge as well.
All right, so I'll, I'll put it then very simply. How do you see this enrichment 45-minute block, taking three years of math and condensing it to two, so that a fourth grader is on a path to be enrolled in pre-Algebra VII?
I, that will not, it does not do that. It will not meet that need.
Okay, so then, just to be clear, but that's what the Math Academy did?
Correct. I understand.
So from a math, and I, I agree, we, we can't do the whole immersion experience, which I love, but if you give that up, what I at least want to replace it is an acceleration path embedded in our schools, equitably accessible to all of our students who are capable and willing to pursue that path. And that's what I don't see here in a 45-minute block every six days.
Right. I understand the 45-minute block and not being able to address that, that does, part of the reason that we included the data for the grade seven pre-algebra in what was sent home, was to look at the work that teachers have already done, and the, what I would call significant growth in kids who are accessing, who are not in Math Academy, who are accessing the grade seven PA course. And so there are pathways and opportunities for students to do that. I do hear you, though, in, in the compacting of the curriculum is not something that we're not going to, that, that we will be able to offer in this, what is being proposed to move forward.
I will just throw out there, and then I, I won't go back, but, but that's what I was looking for. When we gave the Math Academy up, I wanted the acceleration path for our current students who are cap, math-capable, and so that, that remains my frustration.
We, we did look at, and I will, Mr. Wakeman did put together a, a way to try to address that, and as we looked at it, and, and again, as we're in the process of developing the 22, 23 budget, its impact was going to be very profound on a budget that's already a great concern. So we said that this is not something we could support at that time. We are going to look at ways, to your, to your question of how do we provide an acceleration pathway, we are looking at some other ways to potentially do that, whether that winds up in the 22, 23 budget, or a reallocation of some grant funding to at least get it started. We, we will consider that, but the, the need across all 11 sites to replicate the program, even at a relatively small basis, was just really overwhelming to the, to the, to what's already becoming an overwhelming budget, potentially, I don't want to get very afraid, but we have a month to go, but this is just where we are in the process.
Ms. Grunzi?
Thank you. So, you know, first of all, this, this phrase of greater depth for all students is very appealing to me. I mean, I'm not sure what it has to do with the Math Academy, you know, repeating their sentiments, but certainly, that's something I think we should be striving for, so that's great. Where I'm frustrated is that when we voted to extend the Math Academy last spring, the only reason I voted to extend Math Academy was because I, as I understood it, I was told that there was no other way we could accommodate those students without the Math Academy. So if this doesn't do that, it's hard for me to even justify why we're continuing with the Math Academy this year, for all the concerns that have been expressed. I'm just, I'm kind of frustrated, because I, I don't see the solution at all in here for that track for students, so I'm kind of reiterating what has already been said, but just wanted to echo my personal frustration because of the way that I voted, which was specific to this goal, and, and not seeing that yet.
Ms. Grunzi, I'm not sure I'm following you. The, can, the piece of, I'm not following, I think, specifically your question or concern around, maybe better, if you don't mind, what you based your vote on?
Right. So when we were talking about continuing the Math Academy, it was my understanding that we were continuing it, or the idea to continue it, was because the alternative would not accommodate those students. We had no way of accommodating their needs. And that was my understanding of why we, or why I voted for it. So, you know, I've been waiting and very excited about how, in fact, those needs would be accommodated, and in addition, of course, being able to reach the rest of the population is just absolutely fantastic, but I don't, I don't see that here, and so I'm echoing that, but I'm adding the part where I'm just personally frustrated, because I, I based my own vote to extend the academy this year on the understanding that we would be able to create something over the next year. We talked about the one-year timeline for that. I mean, that's my memory of, of that conversation.
The request to delay last year was based on the fact that we had, we didn't have any time to begin to prepare the next steps or the next phases of what this work would be. So, it really wasn't even yet around, it was really two pieces. It was the solution, what, what was a potential solution for bringing the Math Academy back out to the schools, right? And then also this issue of the equity of access, or kind of going more in-depth for more kids, right? As, as we talked about, we were, Mr. Wakeman and the teachers worked really on both ideas, but really, from an economic point of view, the only one we're bringing forward at this point is the, is the idea of access for all students, or the, or the depth of learning piece, because as, as, as I just said, the ability to support in the next budget, the program requirements to, to provide a Math Academy experience at each school for eligible students was, was great. We couldn't just do it.
Thank you for explaining that.
Ms. Rotelli?
There's been a lot of great points made tonight. I, I am always going to be extremely frustrated by the Math Academy conversation, and, and one thing that always comes up is, is that feeling you have as a sped parent, that you're told that they can differentiate to your kid, but somehow, we just cannot manage to differentiate to the gifted math students in the class. So I know we're still working on differentiating up, but it seems like maybe some of our attention should just be put on that. I, I agree with Ms. Kelly. I don't quite understand the 45-minute block every six days. I echo Ms. Gerber's concerns about the, the principals, the elementary school principals trying to find those, those 45 minutes. I also am not sure that this is great for all students, and could those 45 minutes for those students be better spent doing something else? Would love it to see if we had an extra 45 minutes every six days for recess, if not every day, but, you know, I'll again go back to, there's nothing available like this for kids that need that type of instructions to actually access the curriculum. You know, I know this is about acceleration, math acceleration, but for kids who actually need that all-day embedded instruction to read and to access the curriculum, there is nothing like this available for them. And I think, at the end of the day, there's also a lot of deeper conversations that need to be had about inclusion and differentiation, because, you know, I listen to the parents and the kids in the Math Academy, and I understand exactly what they're going through and what they're saying, and I sympathize with those kids. There is something to be said for being surrounded by like-minded peers and learning in that environment and feeling comfortable, and the same can be said for children who learn in different ways. So I think maybe if we all had a deeper conversation about those types of things and potentially programs, and I don't, I hadn't heard before of the wave that Ms. Kelly was suggesting before, and, and how Ms. Maxim Cunnelli was suggesting ways that you can not make kids feel like they're in some sort of a group, but yet they're just moving around and kind of learning with like-minded peers amongst a group that includes everybody, would be ideal for me, and I would be very interested, from a SEPTA perspective, and Mr. Mancusi, to have a deeper conversation with that community about how they really feel about these types of things in their learning environments for their children.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Any last questions? Thank you for the presentation or the discussion. First reading of the 2022, 2023 Fairfield Public Schools calendar. Dr. Parrish or Mr. Cummings?
I'll just invite Dr. Parrish up. I know she's spent, we've gone through several iterations with this, and I know that there's some board questions around this, so we can address that and get ready for the December 14th final read.
Good evening. Zakiya Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So the draft calendar that's being presented today is inclusive of 182 student days and 187 teacher days, with the first day of school beginning on August 29th, 2022, and ending on June 12th, 2023. That end date is inclusive of graduation, so that it does not fall on a Friday. We have spoken with the head principals at both buildings, and they are in support of having the graduation on that, that Monday, June 12th. The CES calendar for the 2022, 23 school year was approved by their board on Thursday, November 4th. It was the, the main basis for the formation of our calendar, however, there is a major difference in terms of the April break. So CES chose to, to schedule the break a week earlier than normal, April 10th through the 14th, and we have followed our traditional third week of April as the, the week of April break, which would fall on April 17th through the 21st.
Just passing out the CES calendar you just referenced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Ms. Isa?
So, thank you. I have a few comments and possible suggestions here that I may bring forward in the December meeting as an amendment. So I'll just start at the top here. A couple weeks ago, I came to Mr. Cummings and expressed an interest in seeing how it would look and play out if we tried to bring back a February break. I was channeling my inner Mr. Peterson, which I have supported the last couple of years when he's brought this up, but I think now, again, I said it earlier tonight, looking at what we've learned in COVID, at what we've learned about the stresses, mental health, and everything else that goes along, yes, COVID caused a lot of that, but I think it unearthed the fact that there's an underlying stress there in today's rigorous curriculum. And I believe in having a break. And in order to do that, I know in the past, we've had long discussions about how adding a February break would push us deep into June and potentially snow days deeper, when not all of our buildings are air-conditioned, and it can get really hot in some of the buildings. We know this. Sometimes we have to call half-days, you know, at the end of the year, depending how late we go. So one thing I did was I asked Mr. Cummings to provide me the last 10-year data on snow days, to try and figure out, because what I couldn't figure out was, and, and some of the people on the board would, might know this better, why some years there are four snow days before you take April break, six, eight, and how it's applied. So going back 10 years, if you take the number of days and you add in last year's days that were remote learning days, so I added those back in as if they had been snow days, I came up with an average of about 4.2 days. Now, one year in that 10-year span, there were 10 days, right? So that was an anomaly, that's an outlier, which I think if that weren't there, the number would be even lower. So that being said, I think we've talked a lot about this, you know, concerns about, you know, the environment and everything, and we're having warmer summers and less snow, and, you know, I'm at the point now where I kind of want to roll the dice, and I'm interested in looking for feedback from the board on the level of interest in bringing back a February break, and the way I would suggest doing it would be move that half-day early dismissal for PK through 12 PD on February 16th to the 17th. So the 17th would become an early dismissal, and the week of the 20th becomes February break. Now, if we just did that, that would mean we would have, and, and not take anything else away, it would mean we would have to add three days to this calendar, and this year, or, or, in the, the next school year, would push us out to an end date of June 15th. Let me just confirm that that's right. June 15th, with the 14th and 15th being half-days. Now, when you throw snow days in there, let's say there's four snow days, and the possibility of Juneteenth becoming a required state holiday, it could push us out to the 21st or 22nd. That is kind of late, and it could play into factors with college visits and, you know, those weeks that kids, some kids go off, and, but I, I would also argue that it would push us closer to when camps start, and we also have that possibility to take away from April break. So the feedback I'm interested in is, if any of you other board members would support this, would you be interested in trying to add three days or doing what we do in February in April, and making that an extended long weekend? So right now, in April, and, and I would also add that I wouldn't be opposed to moving this a week earlier to the 10th. So instead of the 17th through the 21st, we would start, tie it into Good Friday, like other districts do. But I would also be open to leaving the 7th Good Friday, and then maybe having the 10th, 11th, or the 10th, 11th, or 12th off, so we only have to come up with one or two days. So I throw that out there. That's something that I'd really like to explore, and, and I will absolutely put forth as an amendment, and, and hope that I can get enough votes to get this done, but I think it's time to look at this. And also, just to mention, I think we need to look at, do we really need the first six, if we keep April break, regardless of my amendment option or whatever, do we do we really need to look at six extra days at the end? Or do we take it away? But I think if we're going to take it away, we need to look at extending that February period. So I put that to the board as an expectation that I will bring forward. And welcome any questions here, since we're in public, because this is not something that we can discuss offline. This is a public discussion. So if you have anything, I'd love to hear it.
Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, actually, just really quickly, I just wanted to just ask Mr. Cummings a question if you had found anything about what Bridgeport is doing for the April break?
I don't believe Bridgeport has yet adopted a calendar, but in the past, they've tended to align with the CES calendar.
Which would mean that if they continue that way, that that full week would be, that would be the week of the 10th? So they would have off the 7th and then the week of the 10th? So I guess just to tie into what Ms. Asa was just saying, talking about reducing possibly April break, my concern is with the aquaculture students, because we have over 100, I believe, aquaculture students.
That's right.
So if we started to take away from April break, which I don't believe any district in our county, DRG, state, I don't know. I mean, I know that some districts do have February breaks. Some districts have shorter ones, like we do. But to the best of my knowledge, every district has an April break. So my concern would be, first of all, that we would be the only district that didn't have a full week off. And second of all, the aquaculture students would be kind of in a bind on some of their days, because they would kind of have half a day of school with us, but then they wouldn't have the other half if Bridgeport was taking that full week off. So that's just something, first of all, I do think, I agree that if it turns out that Bridgeport is that week, that we would definitely want to, regardless of anything else that happens in the calendar, switch the week earlier so that we would make sure that those students were, you know, taken care of. And it appears that there are a number of other districts that also have the week of the 10th, too. And then in terms of February break, I mean, I was a board member who voted to reduce the February break many years ago, when we had schools going really late. I would just say, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, because I think you can make an argument either way. But I would just say that having most recently had children in high school, which are un-air-conditioned, where you were asking students to sit to take final exams in classrooms that can get up to 90 degrees, that is a concern for me. And you're talking about final exams that, you know, are impacting these children's academic careers. So I do think, I mean, luckily, many of our elementary schools are getting air-conditioned now, and I think that that is very important as well. We don't want any of our students to be in hot classrooms. But having had students, my children in high school for eight years straight in un-air-conditioned buildings, that is a real concern of mine. So that would be something. But again, I'm not saying I am opposed to it, because I think you could make an argument either way. But I do think that that piece of the puzzle with the high school students and, you know, what's going on in those schools and how hot they can get is definitely a concern of mine.
Ms. Kelly?
I just want to say that I, personally, I support the idea of a February break. I do love, I do love that idea. If given the choice, I would prefer to take it from April rather than extend in June. I know that people can make the argument either way for preferring April over February, but personally, I like the idea of getting away, possibly in the dead of winter, as opposed to April, when it's nice out. I like the idea of April being a little bit later. The kids can, you know, maybe eat lunch outside if they're still in school, you know, like they've been doing in the middle schools. There's a lot more, they can't do that in February. That's a non, it's not happening. So I just, I personally do like the idea of February. If that's something that anybody would entertain, I would be more inclined to take away from April than add on in June.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Asa for his background work on this. As you know, in past calendar iterations, I've looked hard for a way to return us to February break, a full February break. And there's no easy answer to this, because the, you know, the air conditioning heat at the end of the year issue is very real. And I've looked up data from when I was in school and now. And the days are hotter. They simply are, which is a fundamental argument in favor of expanding our air conditioning in schools. You know, but by the same token, I do think that, I appreciate Mr. Asa doing the work or asking the administration to do the work, you know, on the number, on the actual number of snow days and the snow experience, because I think, well, thank you. Because I think it's highly relevant. I mean, this number that we keep putting in here, and, you know, as Mr. Asa says, it's been inconsistent the first six snow days. What if we consider the first four snow days? It is, it does feel a little bit about rolling the dice, but we are also, it also kind of plays into the climate change issue where, you know, we're seeing hotter days at the end of the year and wondering if that's also resulting in fewer snow days, fewer cancellations in the early part of the year. So I will look at this. The one concern that I have, as I'm going to be talking about this, is sustainability. If we're going to do this, it can't be just for one year. I think if we're going to decide as a board to make that happen, we need to, you know, really look carefully at different iterations of the calendar to make sure that we have options for other years as well. That's one thing that I haven't done too much work on this round, but I will be doing between now and the next meeting.
Any other comments on this? Ms. Maxim Cannelly?
Thank you. So I had a few other issues, just to toss out there and see, obviously, reactions, any reactions from staff and then reactions from fellow board members. Just going through the calendar, starting in August, the feedback I've gotten is that that first week being five full days, full in, was pretty brutal on kids. And I would be in favor of pushing the August 24th to the 25th, so that the 26th PD day was on the 29th, so that it's a four-day week. That was one thought I'd had. And if for some reason we really needed a five-day week, I would be very curious about having one of, again, all of the early release days as a working parent who still remembers what that was like with elementary school-age children. All those early releases are pretty tough. And I would be curious if for some reason we needed to stay with the 29th about having an additional, moving one of those PD days to September 2nd. I mean, we've got one only a few weeks later on the 23rd. So some way to break up that first week, because I think the five full days back is, again, from what I heard, was pretty tough. Second, I had a question regarding January 13th. And I know snow days would make this difficult. But given that, a few weeks later, we do have at a minimum that long weekend in February, I've always wondered about that idea of moving January 13th to fall approximately, and it would unfortunately could only be approximately, where midterm exams would end for the high school. I know in New York, we actually had what was called Regents Rating Day, and it was a full day off where all teachers did was gather themselves and get ready for a new semester and do a, well, the scientific term is crap-ton of grading. But I would be curious about, just as a, first of all, it would be a great break for kids to have that January 13th moved to, and again, this is a ballpark idea of like the January 25th, and that it would be a natural time for the high schoolers, that that would be better suited as opposed to necessarily working around trying to give people a long weekend. I'm thinking about the kids and that. But that was just something I was interested in feedback on. I did have a hard time with March, those four early-release days in there. It's just, that's putting quite a load on a tremendous number of families. And be curious, at this point, because this was something new to the calendar, to have this many early-release PD-oriented days is only something of the last five years. We did not used to have this. And at this point, questioning if that is really necessary, especially with all the work we're going to do this year for the District Improvement Plan, if we couldn't outright take one of those away and restore a full day. And then finally, the April break, at least as it's constituted now, I'm definitely in favor of moving it to the week of April 10th.
Ms. Grunze?
I just wanted to add one more point about February versus April break. I mean, I'm personally a big fan of April break, is just thinking about sort of the, I guess, socioeconomic issues related to families and what they do during those times. February break, it can be difficult for families that don't have the means to either go skiing or go somewhere warmer, whereas April provides that opportunity to stay local and enjoy that time off. So I just wanted to add that, you know, when we're thinking about our different communities, to be mindful of that.
Thank you, Ms. Grunze. I agree. That was, you took my comment that, just in terms of the breaks, I would not be supportive of taking away April break for exactly those reasons. We do have a long weekend in January. We have, you know, the holiday break in December. At the end of December, we have a long weekend in February. March is, you know, a full month. I think that after a full March, having that week off in April, and as you said, it's nice here that those people that can't get away, at least being home and being off in the warmer months is beneficial. I share Mrs. Gerber's concerns. Having had a child at the third floor of Fairfield Level High School during finals for eight straight years, it's concerning. I really, not in favor of pushing the end of the school year further back in June until we get air conditioning in our schools, our high schools.
Ms. Rotelli?
I would support a February break. I don't have a problem with extending the three days in June. If we go over with snow days, why couldn't we just take it off of the February? If you added a full week then, couldn't you just cut it out of, start chipping away in February instead of April? But anyway, I would support February break.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, to Ms. Rotelli's question, the problem with trying to take it out of February is because the snow, that works if the snow days happen prior. March is often our worst month, you know? So that's the only problem with it. I want to just circle back to something Mr. Peterson said about sustainability. One of the beneficiaries of the current, of the proposed calendar next year, right, is Christmas falling on a Sunday, which makes that, as it does this year, really. Christmas week is relatively short. If you play that out, in 2023, Christmas is a Monday. It's still relatively short. But because of the leap year in '24, Christmas jumps to the Wednesday, and now you're back into like a week-and-a-half-long Christmas break time. And that takes place over a couple of years. So the wild card usually in this kind of calendar, you know, it all makes a difference on weekends and things, is the length of that Christmas break. So just a thought.
Ms. Asa?
So two things to piggyback. So to Mr. Cummings' point about Christmas, it's still going to be a week. It just may be starting in the middle of the week and going to January 1st. So you could still, if Christmas is on a Wednesday, you could still, early release on the Tuesday, have the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right? 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th. And then you have two days, right?
It doesn't work.
If it's Wednesday, you're not coming half-day on Christmas?
You'd have a half-day on, you'd have a half-day on Monday.
Well, it's possible.
Yeah, but nobody's coming, well, everybody's coming to work. Nobody's coming to school. Right. So I hear what you're saying. And you reminded me of Dr. Tittles. I just squeeze every last piece of blood out of that. But it's, it's really tough.
Well, and also, how many kids are going to come to school when Monday is the last day in June? I mean, so, you know, I get it. To Mrs. Maxim Cannelly's point, you know, and this might go to, it's an interesting point you raised about the feedback you got about the full week. And I wonder if that was mostly secondary-level parents, because the overwhelming feedback I got at the elementary level was, it was very well-received. And especially for dual-income families. So, yeah, so it's interesting. I mean, I just want to say that, that my feedback that I got from quite a number of families was very different, but it's probably apparent that it's at a different level.
Any more discussion on this? Okay. Thank everyone for their suggestions. We have some scenarios to think about and just, sure, Ms. Asa, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Would it be prudent to get unanimous consent from the board now if there was an interest by everybody, regardless of what happens with February or not, to move the April break to the 10th to coincide with CES so that when they present the calendar for a vote? Or would that be another first read?
I think that we need to, I would be hesitant to have unanimous consent now, just because we don't know what Bridgeport's calendar. I would rather just maybe wait and see if we get confirmation in terms of when Bridgeport is scheduling their spring break. But I agree about moving it to align with CES, if that's what Bridgeport's doing.
And do we have, I'm sorry, you might have mentioned it. Do we have any indication of when we'll know about Bridgeport? Is that?
I don't. But we can find out if we can get a, get a sense of that.
Maybe Mr. Cummings reaching out to the super and you reaching out to their board chair to see, in the next two weeks, if we got that information. It could be helpful to let us know ahead of the meeting.
But just a sense of the body, that if Bridgeport is aligning with the CES calendar, is everybody really on board with our, just moving our April break to also align with the CES calendar? And Bridgeport calendars to, you know, you know the deal. All right, so we have a sense of the body that that will be moving forward. And else you see an issue with that, Mr. Cummings, that we're not aware of?
No, I can check with Mr. Testa.
Okay, so that is where we'll lead this discussion for now. I just asked the board if anyone is planning on making amendments to the calendar at our next meeting, just to bring a written copy for everybody, just to make it easier for us to move that process along. Moving on to approval of amendments. The Board of Education approved the October 26, 2021, 6:00 PM and 7:15 special meeting minutes. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries 8-0. Superintendent's report, Mr. Cummings?
One quick item, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Laborius to speak to the, give you an update on the ESSER grants. Just real quick, as the board is aware, the CIAC guidance for winter sports has come out. We are hoping to get you a final update on all this in the next week or two. The potential exists that during Christmas break, vaccinated athletes are able to participate in most sports without masks while they're actually in competition. So I just want to make sure that that settles before we make it an official declaration. We also are required, just to consult with our Health Department when we do, before we finalize that. So I just want to make people aware that that's there. We're working on it. And as soon as we have an answer, we will finalize that for everybody and get the information out. Ms. Laborius, would you be able to come up? One of the things that we had committed to with the ESSER grants was to provide as part of our quarterly updates, updates on the grant spending. And we forgot to do that at the first quarterly report. So we're going to make up for that now. And then when Ms. Laborius returns to the Board of Finance, we'll provide the update with them as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cummings. I'm Courtney Laborius, Executive Director of Finance and Business Operations. The first grant that I'll present on is the ARP ESSER grant. For Fairfield Public Schools, it's $2,881,317. It was submitted on August 13th. And after a lot of hard work by staff, it was approved on October 29th. Funds for this grant must be obligated by September 30th, 2024. So the budget covers three years. When you see the obligations in the budget for the grants, we show the life-to-date of the grant on this report. And so, and you'll only see the obligations for the current year. And you also will not see the obligations for the hourly, so we expend those as they come in. We don't obligate them as an encumbrance. So for the ARP ESSER grant, because we just received the approval, we've only obligated about 15% of the grant. And the year-to-date obligations are for mainly the DEI administrator, the after-school site supervisor, the equity and SEL training, and the high school laptops. The rest of the items are underway, and we look forward to reporting more on that in the upcoming Q2 grant report. The overall budget is the same as what was presented to you, I think, back in August. That hasn't changed.
Excuse me, do you mind just repeating those four items?
Oh, sure. The DEI administrator, the after-school site supervisor, the equity and SEL training, and the high school laptops. Most of the budget is for salaries, but a lot of the budget is for one-time. So about a third of it is for the DEI position, because that covers three years. that covers three years. And then there's time-limited staff investments that aren't of an ongoing nature, so it's not FTE investments, but it's investments in, for example, the After-School Supports and the Site Supervisors, the SEL Coaching at the secondary level, and the Lead Teachers at the elementary schools, as well as the, you're familiar with the State Residency Program, where we are in partnership with the State of Connecticut to have a student-teacher resident that then is obligated to work with us for three years after they complete the program. The total grant award for FPS was 1.2, 1.3 million, or $1,282,407. That was submitted in late April and approved in May, and a revision was submitted and approved recently as well on 10/19. As of that 11/23 report, we had obligated about 57% of the budget, or 724,000. These funds must be obligated by September 30th, 2023, and the budget covers two years. I know you're familiar with Esser 2 from having heard the report before, so I'll walk you through what changed in the budget and the spending to date. So we refined the number for the summer boost staff to reflect what we accomplished this summer and the, the enrollment that happened this past summer, and we're anticipating the same experience next summer. We also refined the grant report so that we could break it out by the categories of the Boost Program, which is the summer program, and some of the new categories we had for Homebound. So you see HB, that's Homebound Instruction. And then we separated out the non-instructional supplies from the instructional supplies, so we can monitor the spending more carefully. So we refined the number for the summer boost, like I said, and added three teachers that will, that work with students in quarantine status. We reduced the PPE and the desk shields based on what we anticipate we need. So we also were able to increase funding for the summer remote tutoring teachers, and we added Homebound Remote Student Support. We also added Contracted Learning Programs for Homebound Remote Students and added the Consultant for the Middle School Block Schedule. So you'll see in the spending, boost for last summer is complete. And as I mentioned, we don't encumber for next summer for the hourly staff until we're in the summer of next year. We anticipate doing another revision as we near the end of the year and see, you know, where we land with what's going to happen with COVID this winter and what we need for summer next year as well. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Asa?
Sorry, could you elaborate a little bit more on those 10 FTEs you talked about that were, I can't remember if you said not permanent or flexible?
Sure, sure. Oh, it's not 10. So about a third of the budget is for the DEI Administrator because that's covering three years. And then in, in addition, we have various things that come up in our, you know, 100 and 200 series because they're staff payments, but it's not an FTE. So for example, the After-School Program Supports, that's teacher time, but it's not an FTE. So, you know, we'll do that for the duration of the grant and then, you know, revisit it at, at that time, but it's not an ongoing obligation that would build a cliff in our budget.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. But one concern I have is that you say it's not an ongoing obligation that will create a cliff in our budget, but how do we know that? So that, that's my one, that's my one concern, maybe to Mr. Cummings. Is, is that something that Mr. Mancusi and you are keenly looking at? Because this is only for two years. These issues that have been created by this pandemic are going to go long after that. And maybe there'll be more money, maybe there won't, from the federal government. But I guess I just, I just ask that we're keeping a close eye on that as we build budgets for this year, coming next year, and the year after, as we've talked about with our improvement plan, you know, we, we can't be sitting here in a couple of years saying, oh, we still need these services, and those were granted, and now we're getting hit by that. So just saying it out there and putting it out there for you.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Asa?
The, Mr. Cummings, the, the three teachers to work with the students in quarantine, is that kind of basically what came out of conversations we had a couple of months ago, I think, about how you had mentioned by grade level? Was, was that it? Like you're combining kids at schools with somebody based on grouping grade levels?
That's correct. Excuse me, we, for the students, the element, this is really primarily for K-5 students, this is only really for K-5 students. And we're grouped roughly by K, K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Dr. Savic Chancik oversees this, the students are going in and out of quarantine. It has become a bigger problem in the past few weeks. Screen and Stay has added some complexity to this, so it's pretty much a daily exercise for him to oversee students coming and going, but the teachers have been terrific. And they group students primarily by grades when they meet with them. So it's, everybody's being very flexible to make it work.
So were these new hires, or we, we had staff in-house that we were able to bring even though they're additional FTE?
These were, these were new hires.
Okay, and I'll leave it at that.
And Ms. Laborious, just for the upcoming budget, this will be, these grants will be recorded as revenue in the budget, and then recorded, the expenses will be offset just as we do for our Title I funding?
Correct, yes. We draw it down as we expend it, and we, and we show the revenue on the report. And we'll, we'll report this out every quarter when we do our regular budget reporting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Cummings?
That is it.
Committee, committee liaison reports. Mr. Asa?
So you rarely hear from me in the Transportation Committee, because generally all of that is, is cases that come to me with a safety concern for a bus stop. But one thing I just wanted to let people know, there, there's been some interest from the public about bus tracking and an app that will allow you to kind of have an ETA for your bus coming. It's not going to show the whole route or other kids. It would be, it would be private for your own child or children. This is something that is in the works. I, Mr. Cummings allowed me as the, as the board member to work on this with our Transportation Department, and I will say it's going well. There is a app from First Student, our bus provider, that is used, that is not going to cost us any additional money. However, the complexities of COVID and transportation and bus driver shortages and filling in for routes makes it very difficult to launch this app at this time and have it accurate and not, my fear is causing more confusion and frustration than what the idea of this app is. That being said, we do plan to slow-roll a pilot on this, and there, there is certain instances where, I'll give credit to our Transportation Department, because unlike many surrounding towns, we have been able to avoid not filling routes. Other districts have had serious problems with not being able to fill routes and, and kids being, you know, hours late if they needed a bus. And our Transportation Department and First Student have worked to really save our district. So a combination of shortages and sicknesses, and if a bus driver gets quarantined. So what would happen is, in this app in your school, you have routes assigned, right, and a bus is assigned to that route, and there's GPS guidance and data and everything. If your bus driver is out, or they can't fill that route, and they have to pull from another bus that doesn't normally fulfill, so you, you have a high school, middle school, elementary, all the different tiers and levels. So if you pull that bus, that's not going to be set in the system in that route, so it's not going to show up. So if your child has a bus that day, they're getting their bus, but it's not their regular bus, it's not going to show in the app. And we're having a lot of instances of that. So I just wanted the public to know, for those that are interested and have been asking for this for years, it is in the works, but I just ask for patience because, like I said, what we don't want to do is roll out a software and an application that parents can use that solves these problems that they've been worried about, and then all of a sudden, they're frustrated because it's not showing up. And with all of the work that our Transportation Department does, we can't ask them to every morning, go look and see, on top of rerouting bus routes and everything, notifying individual people on each bus. It's not as easy as just flipping a switch in Infinite Campus and sending out a message. So we're just balancing that, but I did want people to know and the board to know that we are going to slow-roll a pilot, and hopefully, as things continue to improve, and we get back to some normalcy one day with not having shortages of bus drivers, we'll be in a better place. But I just wanted to give that update since I think some of you were curious of what's going on with that.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Any other? Ms. Rotelli?
Yeah, SEPTA is not having a meeting in December, but will be back up in January, and we will have a presentation from the Police Department.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
All right, not specifically update about Finance Committee. We're going to be meeting tomorrow. Among the things we're going to be discussing, we have some budget items, but I, I did want to say, relative to things that were said earlier in this meeting from Mr. Asa about a possible Facilities Committee and a Curriculum Committee that Ms. Max and Cannelly mentioned, that I know has been a frequent request of our superintendent. I also put on our, on our Finance Committee discussion, I, I want to have a discussion of what our role, of the role of our committee should be, especially with, with our experiences this past year, whether it can change, because I, the work that I've done in reviewing other towns' committee structures, there's a lot we can change, and there's a lot that we can improve. And, and I think that that may need to be ultimately a bigger board discussion, but I want to have a little bit, a fragment of that discussion tomorrow in Finance Committee for, for our committee.
Do you want to share Mr., the memo, just publicly, from Mike Zubba?
Oh, yeah, so I, I, relative to the meeting that we had in October with Mike Zubba, who was the demographer from the SLAM Collaborative, formerly Malone McBroom, about enrollment projections, we had asked at the time whether it would be worthwhile to get a new set of enrollment projections based on the fact that we have had unusual experience with COVID, people moving in, people moving out, at the same time that there is a lot of development and ferment in the real estate market. He came back to us in November saying that the situation is still quite in flux, and that, you know, unless we were doing anything major and immediate, he didn't see an, an immediate need for it. Now, as I understand, and I think I may have misspoke this when I updated the board, there is, in the current year, a $50,000 appropriation for, for a, a new enrollment, 10-year enrollment projection. And we, discussing this in the committee, felt that there was value in going ahead with that. Getting, getting some data, because the data that we had previously was, the vintage was February 2020, and it's certainly likely to be somewhat, somewhat different. So that's the discussion that we had at that time. I, I updated board members by email, but that was the, as far as we've gone in that discussion.
Mr. Cummings also thought it would be useful to have just updated projections for planning. Before we just continue, can I just have a motion to extend the meeting to 11/10? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Rotelli, all in favor? Motion, is your hand up, Ms. Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries 8-0. Hopefully we'll be before that. Our discussion in committee was really just wanted to bring it before the board in terms of, to get a sense of a body about moving forward, just to getting updated projections.
I, I guess I will ask this, but if the, the feeling of the consultant was that this is still very much in flux, I don't understand spending $50,000 on it.
It wouldn't be the full $50,000 we were going to approach to see if we could get a lower rate, just to have him to look at the 10-year projections, and then if it needed to be done again, see if there would be reduced rate the following year. And that's why we're really bringing it to the board. He did say that there was fluctuations in the housing market, but we're still tracking relatively district-wide to where we were. Ms. Asa?
Yeah, from my aspect in, in the committee, you know, I was a little surprised at his response, quite honestly, because in our conversation, some of the information that he shared with us was, was quite different than what we'd anticipated at certain schools. And there were clear changes that occurred. And I think what, what he was trying to do was say, yeah, if we do this now, it's not the be-all, end-all, because there still could be flux. But I think that was more of a CYA kind of response. To me, there was enough change in this town, and, and especially in the real estate market, and with all of the developments going up, that I, I personally, as a board member, want updated projections. We had it budgeted. As they mentioned, it's not the full amount to, to do just the update on the 10-year portion. But I'm going to say, and I've said it again, we need to start doing the hard work of looking at our buildings and looking at our waterfall. We have a $50 million project on the waterfall for Dwight, because we have to decide whether we're going to rebuild that, what we're going to do. And I'm sorry, I, I want numbers that reflect today when we start those discussions. And that's, that's my feeling.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I mean, just to, just to add, I, I think that the work that Mike Zubba did was largely, as, as was said earlier, just seeing how enrollment was tracking against those initial projections. It was not a deep dive into real estate trends or, or development locally. So we, we don't know what the final product will look like. I, I don't know that because our enrollment is currently tracking by those February 2020 projections, that the final result is necessarily going to be very similar to, to what that report was.
So we are just really looking to, for the board, just sense of the body to continue the conversations with him and not just end them right now. We had talked about, Mr. Cummings had reached out to see if maybe he could come and meet with the board in December, but his schedule is full, looking to try, try to get that on the calendar, but really wanted to know, the board to know where we were and see if there was any huge objection of just continuing the conversation with the SLAM Collaborative. Okay. Ms., okay, all right. Oh, this is, yeah, this is my committee liaison report. I just wanted to update that Mill Hill is, you know, nearing the finish line, and my understanding is that the construction trailer will be going away this month. If we, well, an hour from now, it'll be this month. So sometime in December, the construction trailer will be gone from Mill Hill, and then really it will just be, you know, change orders and punch list items. So it, it's, you know, it's, it's getting there. And, you know, it's really close to the end, and it looks great. And, you know, my understanding is that they're really happy with it, and the, the building committee's great. Jason Lee has really been moving this baby along. And, yeah, so I, I think it's, it's definitely looking good. It's, it's nice to have a, a building project that isn't like fraught. This is like the first time that I've been a liaison to a building project that I'm like, good news. So I'm just enjoying the moment for now, but, yeah.
I do remember some fraught earlier in the project, in fairness.
Oh, no, there was definitely fraud. But, you know, and there's still work to be done. I mean, obviously, a lot of the, you know, the grass and the plantings and things like that will be happening in the spring, but, you know, so right now, if you drive past it, you're like, whoa, you know, it looks like there's still a lot of work to be done. But the building itself and the project, the major part of the project is, is complete, and so that's definitely good news. And I had emailed the board about just, the committee is looking to give us tours. They're very proud of the work and want to bring the board in, so we'll work on getting a date on the calendar for those tours. Okay, with that, any more reports? Seeing none, we'll bring it to open board comment. Seeing none, take it to the public. Any members of the public that would like to give comment, invite you to come forward at this time?
Anything?
Agenda, agenda items, anything that's been discussed on the agenda. Just give your name and address for the record. So, am I pushing that? Okay. I'm Michelle Love,
and I live in 282 Brookland Terrace. I've never been here before, so just tell me if I'm doing something wrong. But I just wanted to quickly talk about the implementation of the Black and Latinx curriculum and the new class and the new course. It's going to hopefully come in as a US History course. But I am a senior at Fairfield Ward High School, so I have already taken my requirement for US History. I was an American Studies student, so AM Studs, so I took US History alongside with AP Lang, which is fantastic. However, I was speaking with my other, with my other students and peers who attended today, and we can confidently say together that there is no non-white perspective in those classes, and that is something that we have truly lacked as a component of our education of American history. And I really just have And I really just have, uh, one question for you guys. I'm not, you guys don't have to answer, it's more rhetorical, however. What is, uh, George Washington's perspective on the Revolutionary War? Why is that considered more US History than a slave's perspective on the Revolutionary War? Um, and I connected, and I, connected is the wrong word, but I was really drawn to what you were saying about how, um, this can't really be US History because we are missing so much. And I beg you, I beg you to understand how much we are missing from the US History courses that are implemented right now. There, there are so many gaps in my knowledge, and everything that I've learned has to come from independent studies. And these, this is American history, just as much as George Washington, uh, just as much as Thomas Jefferson. This is, this is stuff that needs to be implemented for our students, and it is US History. And I beg you to understand that those are your internalized racial biases that you're not even realizing. A slave's perspective on the Revolutionary War is just as equal to George Washington's. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Point of personal privilege?
Yes, Mr. Peterson?
I just wanna say from my own perspective that at no point have I ever suggested that those elements were not part of American history and are not US History and not something to be taught. I, I don't think that anyone on this, at this board table is, is saying that. I just wanna be very clear on that point. Uh, I, I think all of the elements currently enumerated in that, in that course guide, all those things, I think, could be taught today. The question is, how many minutes do we have? And I'm sorry, I, this isn't, I, we don't normally respond to public comment, but I wanted to be very clear, at least about my stance, on what constitutes US History and what does not. I think all of that constitutes US History.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Marco.